Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed Flynn, and I am the Council President. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I'd like to ask my colleagues and those attendants to please silence their cell phones and electronic devices. Please also be respectful and do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave, and if you fail to comply, you will be escorted out. Please also note that according to City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum, please?
Counselor Royal, President, Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Law, President. Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Lara, yes. Counselor Louie Jen, yes. Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy, yes. And Counselor Worrell, yes. You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. The introduction of the clergy. This week's clergy is Pastor Stephen Donahue. He's invited by City Council Frank Baker. If you will both come to the podium at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. We won't be as fiery this week as we were last week, so just so people know. Pastor Stephen Donahue has been a pastor of Christ Community Church in Naperville for 20 years. Pastor Donahue has been serving the Dorchester community by making the building available to AA groups on Friday and Saturday nights, teaching the 12-step program weekly and hosting Bible study. He worked with the Boston Police on the Home Front Initiative, a national award-winning collaborative between BPD School Police Unit and the Youth Violence Strike Force and faith-based organizations. Pastor Donahue is looking forward to further outreach by connecting with the city of Boston, again, especially the youth. With that, Pastor Donahue, thank you for coming out today, and the mic is yours.
Let's pray. Father, I just come to you for wisdom and understanding for this council. We lift them up, Father, for strength and wisdom. And Lord, only you can do it. Help them not to lean on their own understanding and all their ways, acknowledge you, and you will direct the path. Now again, Father, I just lift them up for strength and wisdom, and we'll give you the glory and honor for what you are about to do, what you have done, and what you will do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Counselor Baker, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and please rise if you are able to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Pastor Donahue, and thank you, Counselor Baker, as well. We're going on to the approval of the minutes. Now on to the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communication from her on to the mayor. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0432, please.
Docket number 0432, message in order for your approval, a home rule petition to the General Court entitled "Petition for a Special Law Relative to Act Relative to 30B."
Thank you. Docket 0432 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0433.
Docket number 0433, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $350,000 in the form of a grant from the Massachusetts Diesel Emissions Reduction Act grant, the DER grant, awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection under a cooperative agreement with the United States Environmental Protection Agency. The purpose of the DER grant is to reduce diesel emissions from the transportation sector. The funds will be used to purchase and deploy fuel-efficient school buses as part of the Boston Public School fleet.
Thank you. Docket 0433 will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0434.
Docket number 0434, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Christopher Cook as a member of the Boston Water and Sewer Commission for a term expiring March 30th, 2026.
Thank you. Docket 0434 will be referred to the Committee on City Services Innovation Technology. Reports of committee. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0314.
Docket number 0314, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which was referred on March 2nd, 2022. Docket number 0314, message in order for your approval, an order for a short-term extension of nine of the 14 remaining urban renewal plans in Boston. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Baker, Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to read this committee report if people will just stick with me here. The Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation was referred the following docket for consideration, docket 0134, in order beginning the process of sunsetting urban renewals in the city of Boston until December 34th. That's actually wrong. It's supposed to be March 34th.
No, that's the original docket.
This is the original docket, okay. This matter was sponsored by Mayor Michelle Wu, and referred to Committee on March 2nd, 2022. Committee held a hearing on Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022. Testimony was presented by Boston Redevelopment Authority. Officials included Director of Real Estate Devon Quirk, Urban Renewal Manager Chris Breen, Chief of Staff Heather Caposano, and General Counsel Eileen Brophy. The summary is, in 2016, the Boston Redevelopment Authority, doing business as the BPDA, requested approval for 10-year extension for the 14 active renewal plans that were set to expire on April 30th, 2016. The BPDA urged the City Council to pass this order that will protect the community development tools that will continue to cultivate vibrant neighborhoods around the city. After extensive deliberations around the use of eminent domain power, trust, and equity issues, and the lack of accountability and access to the BPDA in the past and procedural changes moving forward, the City Council agreed to grant the approval of a six-year extension of the 14 urban renewal planned areas, which is set to expire April 22nd, 2022. This request was subsequently approved by the Department of Housing and Urban Development in 2016. Devon Quirk gave a historical look back on the negative impacts of urban renewal tools used in the past that caused irreparable harm to neighborhoods across the city, particularly the West End and other parts of the city. He explained that the BPDA is operating in a new era of transparency and accountability. He explained that the BPDA's position is that authorization of this order will allow them to continue important work and spur economic development in partnership with public and private investments. Community stakeholders in working with the Boston City Council that is focused on the future development that addresses equity displacement and building affordable housing for the residents of Boston. He highlighted that the administration is looking at development from the lens of equity and inclusion, community and community development. Mr. Clerk highlighted that by using these urban renewal tools, the BPDA has effectuated great change in the city's central business district and neighborhoods, created new opportunities for affordable housing to solidify units for low and moderate-income residents, and build new parks and public facilities and more. Mr. Quirk explained that since 2016, since the 2016 extension, BPDA, in the spirit of transparency and accountability, has facilitated a community engagement process that has got an input on the future of urban renewal and has made relevant urban renewal documents accessible to the public through zoning viewer. Administration officials testified that the BPDA reviewed the program and looked at the ongoing use of the urban renewal tools within the existing planned area to determine the future of BPDA's urban renewal powers in the city of Boston and to begin the process of sunsetting urban renewal. The BPDA is seeking approval for a short-term extension of the nine of the 14 remaining plans in Boston that are set to expire December 31st, 2022. BPDA officials noted that they plan immediately to sunset five of the 14 urban renewal plans on April 22nd, 2022, as the original intent and purpose of these plans have fulfilled. Mr. Quirk said that they intend to return to the council with a plan moving forward that requires further extension of some of the plans in order to wrap up ongoing community-centered efforts. BPDA officials further noted that the importance of the use of urban renewal tools in recent decades, which has resulted in the creation and preservation of nearly 10,000 units of affordable housing, creation and protection of open space, provided new opportunities for many Boston residents, enabled public-private partnerships, and increased planning initiatives. Mr. Breen presented a PowerPoint explaining BPDA's analysis and review process that helped to determine the reasons to allow the five urban renewal areas to sunset on April 22nd, The five to sunset.
That's what they presented.
That's what they presented. The five parcels, including the following urban renewal areas: Brunswick-King Urban Renewal Plan, Central Business District Boylston Essex Plan, Central Business District School Franklin Plan, Kittredge Square Urban Renewal Plan, and Park Plaza Urban Renewal Plan. The extension of the nine urban renewal areas through December 31st, 2022 included the following parcels: Central Business District South Station Urban Renewal, Fenway Urban Renewal Plan, Campus High School Urban Renewal Plan, South Cove Urban Renewal Plan, Charlestown Urban Renewal Plan, Downtown Waterfront Faneuil Hall Urban Renewal Plan, Government Center Urban Renewal Plan, South End Urban Renewal Plan, and Washington Park Urban Renewal Plan. It was reported that BPDA has identified over 1,300 parcels with existing land disposition agreements, LDAs, that are tied to urban renewal powers, some of which provide protection for affordable housing, open space, and other land use provisions. BPDA officials explained that this request, if approved, will provide the BPDA with additional time to set a plan for potential state legislation transfer or protect appropriate provisions. Councils expressed reservations around extension of timeline of December 31st, 2022, as this will not allow BPDA enough time to adequately review and analyze all the LDAs, LDA parcels in their inventory. Councils discussed the impact on the owners of these properties relative to potential tax increases, and the possibility of giving developers an edge in acquiring these parcels for market rate development if these parcels were to expire without notice to the general public. Discussions included the goals and responsibilities of BPDA to use the urban renewal tools to shape and promote economic development throughout the city in a way that supports public good, particularly for the residents living in marginalized communities. Councils stated that their focus is to protect the residents who were impacted by the urban renewal strategy in the past, and most importantly are looking to protect residents who will be impacted by the sunsetting of these parcels moving forward, and recommended that the BPDA institute a longer timeframe of sunsetting the nine parcels that would include six-month check-in with the City Council during that time period. Cognizant of the trepidations and for the necessity of the BPDA's role in future community development, the City Council felt vigorous, meaningful discussions were necessary in a respectful public process that engages the residents impacted by the urban renewal projects. Still going. Counsel Barker and Flynn requested that Park Plaza Urban Renewal Plan be added to the nine parcels that were extended to December 31st, 2022, in order to address the building height issue in the area. Counsel Worrell later requested that the Brunswick-King Urban Renewal Plan also be added to the nine parcels in order to allow more time to address residents' concerns. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson requested to add Kittredge Square Urban Renewal Plan to the nine parcels. Councils discussed and weighed ramifications of taking no action on the order and allowed the renewal areas to sunset on April 22nd, 2022. BPDA officials explained that allowing the urban renewal parcels to expire will also cause the expiration of LDAs, D restricted provisions that include the protection of affordable housing, protection of open space, and other land provisions. Councils expressed concerns in connection with eight-month extension for aforementioned urban renewal plans, including the lack of information regarding BPDA's complete list of LDA inventory to date. They indicated that in order to mitigate the potential future harm posed to residents moving forward, it was determined that further analysis and review of the proposed nine current LDA zones and other BPDA LDAs is necessary. The council discussed extending the requested time period from December 31st, 2022 to March 31st, 2023, for the urban renewal distance that wouldn't immediately sunset. The City Council also requested that the BPDA do a six-month check-in with the body to provide updates on their progress. Following the hearing, an additional consideration. The committee recommends the following: that the following urban renewal areas be allowed to expire. First one is Central Business District Boylston Essex Plan and Central Business District School Franklin Plan. That the following urban renewal areas be extended until March 31st, 2023. Central Business South Station Urban Renewal Plan, Fenway Urban Renewal Plan, Campus High School Urban Renewal Plan, South Cove Urban Renewal Plan, Charlestown Urban Renewal Plan, Downtown Waterfront Faneuil Hall Urban Renewal Plan, Government Center Urban Renewal Plan, South End Urban Renewal Plan, Washington Park Urban Renewal Plan, Park Plaza Urban Renewal Plan, Brunswick-King Urban Renewal Plan, and Kittredge Square Urban Renewal Plan. In recognition of City Council authority in connection with the aforementioned urban renewal plan changes, the City Council and the BPDA director agreed to implement a series of procedural changes with respect to the number of legitimate concerns discussed at the hearing. Following the City Council approval, the BPDA will seek approval from its Agency Board of Directors, Mayor, and Department of Housing and Community Development for extension of the plans. As Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, I recommend moving the list docket from the committee to full council for discussion and formal action. At this time, my recommendation to the full council would be that this matter ought to pass in a new draft for the reasons stated above. Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd also like to, if Counsel Worrell, or Counsel Anderson, or Counsel Barker would like to speak, I'd like to allow them the time also. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. At this time, I'd like to recognize Counsel Barker. Counsel Barker, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Before speaking substantively, I just wanted, from a point-of-order perspective, to suggest that we take a vote, that the new language is properly before the council, just because there's a, the committee report that the chair read reflects an update to the order. And specifically, then, it turned out the updated version on the order accidentally had Brunswick-King twice at the end and not Kittredge Square. So what counselors are holding in their hand that you have is the actual order that we are voting on, and I think we should probably make sure that this updated language that the chair is proposing is before, properly before the body.
Thank you, Counsel Barker. So be a motion to substitute. Seeing and hearing no objection, the language of the committee report would be substituted. Mr. Clerk, will take a vote on that?
Well, there was no objection.
Okay. Any objections? No objections, the language, the new language will be added. Go ahead, Counsel Barker.
And with that, I would just say briefly, because the chair covered it very exhaustively, that I think this is a, I think the council talked a lot about the fact that we want to make sure this is a thoughtful process. It's really important to our constituents, and each of us as district counselors have very specific district issues with each of these, and we want to make sure that we've got time enough to learn them and process them. So I appreciate the chair's recommendation that we extend that time period a bit so it's not hitting us at the exact same time as the crunch on all other legislation, and that we move a few of the districts that have some outstanding questions into that bucket for study over the next year. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Barker. Would any other counselor like to discuss this matter? Thank you. Counselor Baker, the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0314 in a new draft. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Double. I think because it's going to a state agency.
Okay. At this time, Mr. Clerk, will you take a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0314. Counselor Royal.
Yes.
Counselor Royal, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Barker.
Aye.
Counselor Barker, aye. Counselor Braden.
Aye.
Counselor Braden, aye. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The docket has passed. I just want to say on behalf of our colleagues, thank you to Counsel Baker, and thank you to the BPDA team for working on this important matter. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0312.
Docket number 0312, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on March 2nd, 2022, docket number 0312. Message in order for your approval and ordinance regarding targeted residential picketing to protect the quality of residential life in our city. Submit a report recommending that the legislation ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, the chair recognizes Counsel Royal, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Counsel Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to substitute the committee report.
Seeing and hearing no objection. The language of the committee report has been substituted.
Thank you, Mr. President. Everyone should have the substituted copy on their desk. It's the one dated March 30th, 2022. This docket was sponsored by the mayor and referred to the Committee on Government Operations on March 2nd, 2022. The committee held a hearing on March 14th, 2022, where public comment was taken, and a working session on March 25th, 2022. This matter must be acted upon before May 2nd of 2022. The proposed legislation would prohibit targeted residential picketing between the hours of 9:00 PM and 9:00 AM. The term targeted residential picketing is defined as picketing, protesting, or demonstrating with or without signs that is specifically directed towards a particular residence or one or more occupants of the residence, and which takes place before or about the targeted residence. All other ordinances and statutes would apply, including laws regarding excessive noise, disturbing the peace, and blocking streets and sidewalks. The provisions of this ordinance would be enforced by the Boston Police Department, and violators would be subject to fines of increasing amounts based on the number of offenses: 100 for the first offense, 200 for the second offense, and 300 for the third or subsequent offense. That's the version that was submitted. I'd like to thank my council colleagues for joining the working session: Counsel Murphy, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Worrell, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Louie Jen, Counsel Flynn, and Counsel Edwards. I'd also like to thank the members of the administration for their participation. During the working session, the committee discussed why this ordinance is needed when a city noise ordinance already exists, and how that noise ordinance was being enforced. The committee also discussed concerns with the fines and appeals process of this particular matter. The law department was able to provide clarity on the legal analysis and discuss the significant government interest in protecting individuals' privacy rights within their homes. BPD discussed the need for balancing freedom of expression and enforcement of the noise ordinance, stating that the objective of the department is to de-escalate, divert, and negotiate. Arrests are a last resort. BPD also stated that there have been no citations issued for violations of the current noise ordinance for the protected protest, but that the departments have been coordinating with the West Roxbury District Court. During the working session, councilors offered several language suggestions, including defining harm as a standard in order to provide context for the ordinance, for example, regulating activity that rises above a noise level and blocks public ways, removing the word "towards" and replacing it with "against" or "in opposition to," and removing a particular residence. The committee also asked for clarification around the term "subsequent offense" and whether offenses would be tracked over a period of time. The law department reiterated that targeted residential picketing is permissible for 12 hours of the day. The amendments that have been made to the ordinance include the following: the removal of the words "a particular residence" after the term "towards" to eliminate ambiguity, so that it now reads "for the purpose of this section targeted residential picketing means picketing, protesting, or demonstrating with or without signs that is specifically directed towards one or more occupants of a particular residence, and which takes place before or about the particular targeted residence. Amending the fine structure so that they're now lower, so $50 for the first offense, 150 for the second offense, and 300 for the third and subsequent offenses, and then defining the period for which subsequent offenses happen to within a 12-month period. In other words, after the first 12 months, if there's another offense, you would start at one again. Referencing the specific state laws that give the city authority to issue fines, inserting the word "state" before statutes, inserting the word "harassment" in the third paragraph, and finally, inclusion of separability language, which is standard practice for the city to ensure that if challenged, only the challenged provisions would be impacted. The substituted committee report also includes one additional amendment in the fifth paragraph that would prevent information collected by the Boston Police Department through enforcement of this ordinance from being included in any database maintained by the Boston Regional Intelligence Center. Passage of this docket in a new draft will ensure that the expectation of privacy that individuals have in their homes is protected while maintaining freedom of speech and assembly rights. The docket regulates targeted residential picketing between certain hours and imposes reasonable limitations on the time, place, and manner of speech, and is content-neutral. The purpose of this ordinance is to protect the quality of life of our residents and prevent them from becoming captive audiences in the privacy of their own home. In particular, this ordinance seeks to do this during the night and day, a night and early morning, when such intentional intrusion into privacy is especially invasive and burdensome. The proposal in its amended draft provides clarity and is narrowly tailored while leaving ample alternative channels of communication. As the Chair of the committee, I seek acceptance of the committee report as substituted and recommend that this docket ought to pass in a new draft. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Counsel Royal. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? At this time, the chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the call. I wish this body came around me when this was happening to me. There weren't people out in front of my house, but they were calling all around my house all hours of the evening. They were calling my phone, calling me a scumbag, landlord scumbag. They were harassing my wife on her phone. Fireworks, being shot at my house, posts being posted on my house. And this was happening March, April, May, June, July, August of 2020, because I took an action that was about transparency. And now, because this is happening to one person, we're going to change all the rules. And I think we're edging in on First Amendment here. I think we're edging in on the right of free speech. Do I think that people should be out in front of the mayor's house at this point screaming at 7:00 in the morning? No. But it's their right to be able to do it. And because it's happening to one person now, we're going to change the rules. I just think it's totally wrong, and again, I wish I knew the severity of what happened at my house the last time, the same guy that drove by my house all summer long and threw firecrackers at my house all summer long. I came running out of the house, and all my neighbors came out, the women with their babies and everything, and they told me, they were watching it happen. I didn't see it. I'm living on the second and third floor. Don't see necessarily what's happening on the first floor. People were creeping all around my house. This body didn't really give that much of a care about me and my family then. My family and I, proper English, correct? But now, because it's happening to one person, and she happens to be sitting over there, now she could do certain things, like maybe have the police back up into her driveway and get out the back door and drive through them. She could do things like that, but I don't think she's doing that. Because this is a back and forth here. We're looking to just get people more divided, more and more divided. So I, today, will be voting no on this. Not because I think that people should be out in front of anybody's house. They were at my house. They called my house. I lived with them for six months. I just got rid of all the text messages calling me a scumbag. Just got rid of them, because I don't need it in my life. But I think that this is a problem here. So when it doesn't work for us, we're going to change all the rules. At what point does it end? First Amendment, I think we're talking about it here today. First Amendment, I think we're talking about it here today. So I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Baker. Any of our colleagues also wish to speak on this matter? I'm sorry. The Chair recognizes at large the councillor Louis Jean. Councillor Jean, you have the floor.
Great working session on this, but I know that a lot of the councillors had questions from the Boston Police Department regarding some of the language that currently exists, saying laws would continue to be enforced. I'm just wondering if the Chair's office ever received any data from the Boston Police Department regarding requests from councillors on enforcement over the last 10 weeks and the last year on this, on the laws that are included and the ordinance that will continue to be enforced.
Thank you, councillor Jean. Councillor Royo, are you able to respond to that question?
So, as far as we know, I know that the question specifically, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, councillor Louis Jean, was they had made clear that there were no noise citations that they had put up, to their knowledge, within the last 10-week period. And I think we asked for a time of a year so that we can have a better analysis of when and how they've actually held up the noise ordinance. We are still waiting on Boston Police Department to send us those numbers. They have not sent us those, but we will continue to ask and wait to receive, and if required, do a 17F to get the information specifically on the noise ordinances and how they've, in the past, enforced or not enforced them, and where they're doing that and where they're not. I believe that that was the outstanding request, correct?
Yeah, so those violations, those sort of civil violations, we were putting a request
for that. We're still waiting for BPD to give us that data. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, councillor Royo. The Chair recognizes councillor Bark. Councillor Bark, you have the floor.
Thank you, councillor Flynn. I wasn't going to speak on this matter, but I just wanted to say in response to what councillor Baker was saying, you know, I think that a lot of the outreach in 2020, both as councillor Baker was saying that spring, and then, you know, for many councillors, that summer after the budget vote, I think that that was a data point, that the recent actions have been another data point, and that's more about a pattern of the question of sort of like what we think counts as civil discourse in the city and what are the appropriate places for people to make their message heard. I think that, as the Chair has repeatedly said, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM still leaves 12 hours for picketing. And I don't actually think that the media coverage in the city has left anybody unable to express their message on any number of points recently. And so I guess what I would say to councillor Baker's point is that it seems to me that rather than being a reaction, like just for one person, you're saying for the mayor, it's more like we've got a consistent pattern here in which folks are crossing this threshold. And it's a real problem for a lot of our neighbors, right? And we're trying to deal with, how do you think about the fact that elected officials, we answer to you, we absolutely need to hear what people are saying, but at the same time, we've got neighbors who, you know, have a right to their sleep at 7:00 in the morning. And so for me, I guess, as a councillor who's only been in for a couple of years, it feels as though that this last couple of years has been characterized by a lot of activity of this type. And so I don't think about the ordinance that we're voting on as being just about the mayor. I do think about it as also about what you were discussing happening at your dwelling. And I think that, of course, that's always the way that we should be thinking about legislation is as its general impact. And, yeah, we might have a specific instance that makes us focus on the issue, but we should always be legislating for general impact. And I think for me, the reason I'm going to vote yesterday is that I feel comfortable that the legislation is narrowly tailored enough to be well within the Supreme Court precedent when it comes to the First Amendment, a reasonable time, place, and manner restriction, that it's going to be evenly applied, that we're talking about civil fines here, that it's not moving into criminalization. And for me, as a councillor, I feel comfortable that that is going to be a uniform impact and that it isn't about a particular act of speech. So I just wanted to stress that for me, there's actually a continuity rather than a discontinuity here, as somebody who was really troubled by what happened to councillor Baker, what happened to many of our houses in the summer of 2020, and also what's been happening to the mayor and other folks. So I just wanted to say that from my perspective, it's more of a reaction to a pattern. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor Bark. The Chair recognizes councillor Royo. Councillor Royo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to note as well that obviously targeted harassment of any kind, including especially what councillor Baker offered up, is wrong. It shouldn't be happening. And frankly, you know, last year with the budget votes, we saw folks' homes targeted in sort of an isolated incident. This year, and I think it's mostly this year, I think it started this year in 2022, we started to see targeted residential picketing in a way that we've never seen before. We had Superintendent Bailey on our working session, who's been an officer for over 30 years, and said he's never seen this in the entirety of his time on the force. My mother's home was targeted, and whether or not they were attempting to find my home, when they were informed that it was my mother's home, they remained and they continued to harass my mother at her home. And I think one of the major issues with this is when we allow folks to come to a conclusion that going to our homes or the homes of our family members is acceptable, those kinds of mistakes will happen. They will end up outside of people's homes that aren't the people that they're actually trying to get to. They are going to be putting people in distress who frankly aren't even necessarily the targets of who they're trying to put in distress. And so this doesn't, and I just want to be clear, this doesn't even stop them from doing that. From 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, if they wanted to, they could still go to any home in the city and do what they've been doing. It doesn't actually stop that. It just gives folks some grace from 9:00 PM to 9:00 AM to allow them to get ready, start their day, put kids on school buses, do the things that they have to do in the city, regardless of where their political leanings are. It allows them to do this. This doesn't even stop the behaviors that we're talking about. It doesn't actually say you can't go to somebody's home, period. It says from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, for 12 hours of the day, we have 24 hours in a day, for 50% of this day, if you want to go stand outside of somebody's grandmother's house or mother's house, unfortunately, you can still do that. There's nothing here that stops that. And so this is very narrowly tailored, very contained. I think the idea here is to provide some grace to residents, to allow them some peace in the early morning hours because frankly, they deserve that. They did not sign up for that kind of picketing in their neighborhoods. And so that's addressing a new issue that I think we see escalating. We've never seen this kind of escalation. We've never had to deal with this to this degree. I think it's awful that it's happened in the past, and my hope is that, you know, I had someone say it's awful that we're legislating civility, but we are. And so my goal is ultimately peace in our neighborhoods for folks to come to the appropriate sections. I have actually spoken with protesters. I've taken the time out of the day to do that. I have been at City Hall, and yet they still found their way to our homes. And so what I am saying, period, is when we're doing these things, there's a time and place to do them. And this is just saying from 9:00 PM to 9:00 AM, the place is not in front of people's homes. So that's what this is doing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, excuse me. Please, please, no comment in the city council. Officer, can you please escort her out of the room, please? We're in a brief recess for 15 seconds.
The Chair recognizes councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, you have the floor.
So to follow up on the question my colleague councillor Louis Jean had, if you could clarify, councillor Royo, why, if there were some questions, I was at that working session, and I know we had many questions, and some of them were answered in this new wording, but if we have until May 2nd, if you could just make it clearer for me why we're voting today and we're not waiting for some of those, more of the answers to come back? Thank you.
The Chair recognizes councillor Royo. Councillor Royo, you have the floor.
Thank you. Because none of the questions that we're waiting to come back deal with the legality of the ordinance itself. There are questions about enforcement of other existing ordinances that frankly, I think are important in our data we're going to get, and we can follow up on how and how we expect the city and BPD to enforce or deal with sort of these civil infractions and whether or not there's discrepancies in how they're being used and where they're being used. But all of the questions that had to do with legality and whether or not this ordinance would be legally or constitutionally upheld have been answered at this time. There are no outstanding questions on that that were posed at the working session, and so that is why we're moving forward with the vote today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Royo. Thank you, councillor Murphy. The Chair recognizes councillor Fernandez-Anderson. Councillor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for holding the hearings and working sessions. I just have a point to make because, and it's really unfortunate to my brother Frank Baker, that you had to go through that. Wrong to one is wrong, is no matter what, is wrong to all. So I, and James Baldwin, I think, and I'm not, don't quote me word for word, but in the letter to Angela Davis talked about, if they come for you in the night, they'll come for us in the morning. And I think that the tone is about, you know, wrong done to one humankind is like you are doing it to all. And I'm just a little bit disturbed that, one, it happened to you, but two, that, the point is, if, let's say hypothetically that that was the case, you should, I believe you, I'm saying, in your case, you should have been protected and supported. And I'm sure that our colleagues, many of them, supported you. But let's say hypothetically that it was only about one person in this instance, then it's wrong. Wrong is wrong, right is right. And when someone is harassed or hurt, and if that has to go to the extreme for us to change a thing in order for someone to feel safe, then it's wrong. Then she is not safe. Let's say it was only about one person. Remove the mayor from it. Then we have to do what is right to ensure that. Now, we had the working session, and the Police Department was very clear that no one was arrested. There was, there were no actions taken. And so, and I also, I'm to believe, I've seen it with my own eyes, because I know some of us have driven to her home to witness it, to understand what's going on. And I've seen it where officers stand by and things happen, and she's harassed, and she has to walk through people to go somewhere. As a woman, or as a man, as a child, senior, it doesn't matter. She doesn't feel safe. Even if it was only about one person, remove her position or her job title and tell me what you think that is. That's wrong. So we have to address it either way. And I don't believe that we need a new law, a new ordinance, a new anything. I think we're talking about something totally different. This is not protesting. This is harassment. This is abuse and verbal assault. It's totally different. I don't think we need it. But if we have to go to extremes because there's a group of people not doing their job, not arresting, not taking action, for now, we do what we must to intervene so that someone can feel safe. But I don't think that this is just about the mayor. I think that, as my colleagues have stated, it's about her neighbors, and councillor Flynn is going through this, councillor Royo's mom's going through this, and others are going through this. And you just made your point. You said you wish that we did that for you when it happened to you. So do you wish for this to happen to protect someone or not?
Thank you, councillor Fernandez. I wasn't planning to speak on this matter, but I'll speak briefly. I'm going to support this proposal. And one of the reasons, or several of the reasons I'm supporting it, is based on the quality of life of neighbors that live near an elected official or a public official. Can you imagine a senior, 85 years old, that's a World War II veteran, that's struggling to try to get to sleep and having, being woken up at 9:00 at night or 7:00 in the morning? Or could you imagine a person with disabilities that's also struggling, young little babies, infants, or kids that are going to school that need their sleep so that they can function properly the next morning? And they're being woken up at 9:00 at night, 8:00 at night, 7:00 in the morning? So there has to be some civility, some respect for neighbors. And I think this compromise is fair. I do have a little problem with the 9:00 one. I couldn't imagine someone going to someone's house at 8:30 at night and trying to wake someone up, and especially a little baby is trying to sleep, or a senior or a veteran is trying to sleep. I'm supporting it, but I think this is a fair compromise. That's all I'll have to say on the matter.
The Chair recognizes councillor Baker. Councillor Baker, you have the floor.
I appreciate your concern, but my colleagues weren't wrapping themselves around me. They weren't calling to make sure my family was okay. When the fire was out behind my house, that was about midnight, they were crawling all around my house, 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning. The calls started at 7:00, didn't end until midnight. Nobody gave two shits about me and my family. And this is very specific. The legislation comes out after it's happening to her, and by the way, she's not disengaged with the public that's standing outside there. She's still twitting around and everything else. So at what point does she show that she's above it or more? And she's not going to be harmed there. Maybe her ears will be harmed, but the Boston Police will not let her be harmed. And now, mind you, I lived through watching Newbury Street get totally looted. Nobody was arrested. We're looking to arrest people here now for noise violations? We're going to go up with these things, and oh, that's above 70 decibels, we better arrest that guy? The city was on fire. We didn't arrest anybody. I think we arrested the one kid that burnt the police car. That's what I saw. I saw my city that went through 20 championship banners and parades and everything, not a problem, not a problem. But yet, we allowed people from outside, because I was standing on the corners. I was standing on the corners. I was watching who was creeping around my neighborhood, Pennsylvania plates, Ohio plates, Florida plates. This was a national agenda plan out here. And it was the Left that brought us all here. Now that it's happening to the Left, we're going to change the rules. And I think it's very specific towards one person, and I disagree with you. That's what we're having this discussion about, because we should be able to disagree without everybody in this room hating me. Quite frankly, I don't care if you hate me or not. I'm here to represent my people from District 3, and I'm going to say what I have on my mind. I think it's very specific towards her. Yeah, 9 to 9, not a big deal. But I think it's wrong. I think we're encroaching on our right to protest. I mean, the people that were looting the stores on Newbury Street, not a single person got arrested. Not a single person got arrested. What about that businessperson that lost all of their inventory? Did you see the video for the guy on Newbury Street with the bikes? That's in your district. What happened there? So, yeah, I think it's wrong. I think we're doing this specifically because someone's in the office over there, great, you won, awesome. But we're looking to change the rules here now because the Left is in charge. So there you go. Tool of the Left, and now it doesn't work for them, so let's change the rules.
Thank you, councillor Baker. The last comment I'm going to have is councillor Lara. Councillor Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I just wanted to correct for the record that during the George Floyd protests, 53 people were arrested. The person who was not arrested was the Boston Police Department officer who was caught on video talking about mowing over protesters with his vehicle. But 53 people were arrested, two of them who were still going into court and being supported by the ACLU up until just a few weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lara. I'm sorry, I'm not going to take any more testimony.
Councillor Flynn, sorry, he specifically referenced me in my district. I just want to make a really.
All right. Councillor Bark, can you respond very briefly?
Yeah.
Let me just be clear, this will be the last testimony before we go on to a vote.
Yeah, I just want to say, from my perspective as the district councillor during the 2020 situation, we actually had like a major operational failure where there were no police in the area of Newbury Street because they were all centered around the Common. We had out-of-state folks coming in with vans. We had out-of-state folks coming in with vans. It was very orchestrated and planned. It was pretty clearly a separate action from the folks who were on the Common protesting. And so I just want to stress that I think the whole history of that is quite distinct from what we're talking about here. And it was, of course, something that I was deeply concerned about in my district, and the ramifications continue to be something we struggle with in the district. But it was not, I think, connected to the, to the conversation that we're having today. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Bock. Um, Council, excuse me, sir, please, please refrain from talking. Officer, can you please escort him out of this chamber? Council Royal, the Chair on the Committee of Government Operations, seeks acceptance of the committee report and pass of the docket 0312 and a new draft. Mr. Clerk, if you can do a roll call vote?
Roll call on docket 0312. Council Royal.
Yes.
Council Royal, yes. Council Baker?
No.
Council Baker, no. Council Bock?
Yes.
Council Bock, yes. Council Brayden?
Yes.
Council Brayden, yes. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Edwards, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn?
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara?
No.
Council Lara, no. Council Luizhen?
Yes.
Council Luizhen, yes. Council Mejia?
No.
Council Mejia, no. Council Murphy?
No.
Council Murphy, no. And Council Worrell?
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes.
Thank you. The docket has passed and a new draft. We're going on to matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0239.
Docket number 0239, An Ordinance Creating a Commission to Study and Develop Reparation Proposals for African Americans.
The chair recognizes Council Royal, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Council Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair Flynn, but I actually did not oversee that particular hearing, because I was actually sick that day. Counselor Luizhen is going to give the committee report.
That's fine.
Thank you.
The chair recognizes Council Luizhen. Council Luizhen, you have the floor?
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Chair Royal. As Vice Chair of Government Operations, we had a wonderful hearing on Monday, March 28th at 10:00 a.m., regarding the ordinance creating a commission to study reparations. The ordinance would establish a special commission on the study of reparation proposals. As currently written, the commission would include 15 members from specific organizations who would be chosen in consultation with the named organizations, the mayor, and the city council. The commission's duties would include defining reparations, studying disparities and inequalities, documenting personal stories and histories, and creating spaces for information sharing. The commission's findings would be synthesized in a report with specific reparation proposals that address international standards of remedy, how the city will offer a formal apology for its role in the perpetration of human rights violations and crimes against humanity, and how the city's current laws and policies continue to disproportionately negatively affect African Americans. The commission would also include an executive director appointed by the mayor, who would have administrative powers to hire an assistant, submit a budget, and assist with procurement and supplies. At the hearing, we discussed defining the roles and purposes of the commission, debating the idea of stipends for commission members, codifying named organizations, and the structure of the, of the commission, whether it should be a commission versus a department, and other models of reparations across the country and globe. I want to thank the sponsors, Councils Mejia, Fernandez Anderson, and Worrell. Thank you to the councils who attended, Council President Flynn, Counselor Edwards, Brayden, Bock, Murphy, and Lara. Thank you to central staff, Christine O'Donnell and Kerry Jordan, for their support, as I jumped into this, to chair this hearing. And thanks to administration, Chief Mariangeli Solis Savera from the Office of Equity and Inclusion, and Lori Nelson, the Chief Resilience Officer for the City of Boston. It was an incredible group of panelists, who have really been dedicating themselves to this work around reparations, and really encouraging that they believe that Boston could be a model. Dr. Jamadari Kamara, Director of the Center for African Caribbean and Community Development, Yvette Modestine, Commissioner of the National African American Reparations Commission, Dr. Raymond Winbush, Director of the Institute for Urban Research at Morgan State University. I want to thank the advocates from King Boston, New Democracy Coalition, NAACP, and thank you to all the people who testified towards this very rich discussion, and who's written comments, who are now all part of the record. Personally, I want to, there was one of, a member of the public who made a really great comment during public testimony, is that this is a topic and a conversation that we need to run towards and not run away from. Even if the conversation is difficult for some, or if it's a new topic for others, this is an important conversation for us to repair harm that was done, so that we can continue to build towards a more just Boston, and so that we can continue to repair communities. The conversation will continue in hearings and working sessions, and I'm proud of the council for leading in this discussion. I leave it to the chair to recommend further action on this docket, but I recommend that it stays in committee for future working sessions.
Thank you, Council Luizhen. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor?
Maybe the chair?
Okay, you were next. I'm sorry. The chair recognizes Council Royal.
It just briefly, this will stay in committee for working sessions, and we'll, we'll get this out through working sessions. Thank you to the original sponsors for their creation and passage and, and proposal.
Thank you, Council Royal. The chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Vice Chair, Council Luizhen, for stepping in and chairing Monday's hearing. You know, I want to start off by thanking our advocates, Yvette Modestine, Dr. Jamara, Jamar, Jamadari Kamara, Dr. Raymond Winbush. And I would also like to thank the administration, especially Chief Solis Savera, who moved her entire calendar around to stay and listen to the full testimony. So thank you for that, Neil, giving you a shout out, because I know you made that happen, so I really do appreciate you. We had a productive hearing, where we heard from the administration about the initial perspective on the ordinance, and from the advocates around the necessity of certain key aspects of this ordinance. One thing that I think is important to drive home is that we are working on something that both stands on the shoulders of centuries of work, but it's also incredibly new. We need to both be looking to other cities, or even other commissions here in Boston, but we also need to be setting an example for what this work needs to look like. I know there were some portions of the ordinance that were brought up during the hearing, and I am extremely hopeful that we can expand upon that and flush, and flush it out further in our working sessions alongside the administration and my colleagues. You know, it is always difficult to stand up and speak, and oftentimes to speak for folks who have really never felt heard here in the city of Boston. And sometimes even for myself to speak in this space, even sometimes when my voice quivers, I need to recognize that I am here for a reason. And I've taken up a lot of battles here, and have fought for a lot of things. And I see this as an opportunity and a responsibility to recognize why we are here. And when we think about restorative justice, and when we think about repairing the harm, we also have to think about our own accountability and how we ended up here in the first place. So if we're serious about this work, we have an opportunity to flush out the logistics, and do so in a way that honors and that does not replicate harm. And so we are fighting with and alongside the advocates who worked on crafting this ordinance, because that is what we do. We step to the side and create space for other people to lead. And in the spirit of that, I am going to continue to honor that way of working, because it's refreshing. And as my colleagues continue to bring their questions and recommendations to the space, I'm going to also encourage you to recognize that this is heart work, not hard work. And if we can open up our hearts as we do this work, it might be a little bit easier for, for us to digest. And so let's move forward in the spirit of recognizing that 700,000 constituents live here in the city of Boston, and as a city as a whole, we're responsible for all of them. So thank you to my colleagues and to my co-sponsors for signing on and taking on this battle, because it's going to be a fight. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mejia. The chair recognizes Council Worrell. Council Worrell, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counselor Luizhen for chairing a great, great hearing. I'd like to thank my co-sponsors, Council Mejia and Counselor Anderson, and our colleagues that attended. I'd also like to thank Chief Nelson, Chief Solis Savera, Dr. Kamara, Dr. Winbush, Yvette Modestine, Reverend Kevin Peterson, King Boston, and the New Democracy Coalition for joining the conversation. And thank you to central staff for, for what they do. I'm looking forward to having further hearings and working sessions, including at least one in community, for example, utilizing venues like the Bowling Center, Second Church, Abdo Chester, or the Thelma Burns Building. I would love, and I think it's important, to have our neighbors involved in the early conversations of reparations. I'm encouraged that we will be able to work out the details to establish a commission and to be able to lead on reparations here in the city of Boston.
Thank, thank you, Council Worrell. The chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor?
Thank you. I'll try to keep it brief, and shout out to all my co-sponsors, lead sponsor, co-sponsor, all the panelists, shout out to all the Black and Brown people, my white brothers and sisters who've been working on this, allies and everybody nationally working on this. A big shout out to Tenahesi Coats and folks that I admire, Bryan Stevenson. But I wanted to just touch real briefly. I had something to read, but honestly, whatever. Like I, what I want to say is, whenever we have to create space, and we have to, as my colleague mentioned, Council Mejia mentioned, we have to create space to do the hard work. It's somehow, we project our insecurities on others, and somehow begin to get uncomfortable, right? And so to have those conversations, we have to question ourselves, that, the thing that bothers you the most is the thing, the pet peeve is the thing that you yourself are guilty of. And so you have to be very reflective in this work, and really look within yourself and question, what is this really about? Is this, am I upset with this change? Does this threaten my livelihood, or my comfort, or my privilege, or my power? Do you then be, you know, philanthropic and opening up your pockets and your hearts? The, the issue is that when we begin to talk about these things, the people that counter these types of dialogues are really just saying, how does this, does this impact me? Am I safe? Am I going to continue to be comfortable? Am I going to, am I going to have my privilege? Am I going to have my comfort and my livelihood? I think there's space for everybody. And, and sometimes it doesn't mean that because you're white, that you're going to, you're going to be on the opposite side. I believe that our brother, white brothers and sisters here want what is good for our Black Brown in America. I believe that, in the city. But I feel that the conversation is going to get uncomfortable, and we should be patient and honest in order to really talk about how, what do you really want to talk about? How does, how do you really feel about this? And let's go through the work so that we can perpetuate or be exemplary of the behavior that we want perpetuated in the community. So that we are the leaders, so that we are saying, we together collectively are brothers and sisters, and we're working on this issue, and we together are exemplifying what the community should look like. So I look forward to that, to that camaraderie, to that spirit, and I look forward to the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Docket 02, docket 0239 will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0242.
Docket number 0242, Order for a Hearing Regarding Recycling, Compost, and Waste Services in the City of Boston.
The chair recognizes Counsel Bock, Chair of the Committee on City Services, Innovation Technology. Counsel Bock, you have the floor?
Thank you so much, Counsel Flynn. We had a great hearing on Monday. It was really wonderful to have Brian Cofflin, our Superintendent of Waste Reduction, certain Waste Management Services here, and he took all of our questions and talked about all different manners of what the city does on the waste management front. And then we actually heard from panelists from both Seattle and, I'm forgetting his name right now, but just North Hooks at New Hampshire, hearing about what other model cities. And so I think it was a really good model, Mr. President, of the benefit of a hybrid hearing, in that I think it made a real difference for us to have Brian there in person. But then it was great to have Seattle beaming in from across the country. So I want to thank all the colleagues that attended. In particular, I think the most exciting thing was the confirmation that the, the city curbside composting pilot that this council has long been fighting for, and I want to particularly flag the work of our colleague, Counselor Matt O'Malley, on this body. We've been fighting for that and funding it for several cycles now, and, and it now actually, like, the RFP's come back, they're planning to launch it this summer, and it's going to make curbside composting available to 10,000 families at the beginning. And my hope is that that's a, a real start down a path of ramping up to a citywide service in the same way that, as we heard, Seattle has. So I thought that was really exciting, but we talked about everything from batteries and, and e-waste management, hazardous materials, the fact that the five days the city holds right now are just, you know, they're way above demand, to recycling and the recycling market, and how we can make sure that, that we really put our city on a trajectory to reach our zero-waste goals. Because I think Brian was very upfront about the fact that they've taken some major strides, and yet still, we are not on a path to actually meeting our goals there. So I was grateful for the participation of the Environmental Justice Chair, Counsel Lara, and a whole bunch of counselors. And I think another thing that really came out of the hearing that I expect we'll do more council follow-up on, is, as Counsel Baker has constantly pointed out, and I think it's something that Counsel Lara and I share, I know you do, Mr. President, is just the idea that, you know, as we see the contracts for us doing this externally becoming more and more expensive, and we recognize that we need to do more effective waste management to meet, meet our climate goals, like, let's look for ways that we can have actual processing capacity, facilities, and jobs here in the city of Boston. And let's actually be the place that other cities and towns turn to for help with processing their materials, because it seems as though there's a real opportunity there, and, and like, we're going to need more capacity. So I think we learned about, I can't summarize everything. I mean, we learned about the fact the state guidance is going to affect how mattresses get recycled and turned, and thrown away in the city of Boston. That's going to be an upcoming challenge, and I think just, it was very brass tacks, city services, you know, what we, what we do. And in many ways, one of the ways that cities were organized and grew in the first place was to help manage, manage trash and waste, and make sure that people have the opportunity to live in a clean and sanitary city. So I was grateful to host it, and we'll definitely be continuing follow-up, Mr. Chair, and my request would be that the docket remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bock.
Oh, sorry, and I neglected to mention my co-sponsors on the docket, Counsel Flaherty and, and Counsel Brayden, who's right here with me, who were wonderful and stayed for our whole very long hearing, so thank you.
Thank you, Council Bock. Would any of our colleagues like to speak on the matter? I, I will speak on it. I just want to say thank you to, to the chair and to the, to the sponsors of this. I also want to make sure that when we roll the program out, that different neighborhoods have different needs. In the South End, I'm struggling with barrels, and with the recycling, and with pest control, and adding composting, which I, which I, which I support. But we need to make sure that when we roll this out, we have a public awareness educational campaign that especially includes the residents, but also includes district city counselors, so that they can educate their constituents working with ONS on the importance of this program. One of the, the first hearing I'm going to call for this year is on pest control, and I think that's also part of the subject of work with, on this issue with many of our colleagues, most recently with, with Counsel Brayden. But pest control is a major problem in the city of Boston, in my district, and other districts as well. But during this budget process, we really need to advocate for basic city service funding for these critical nuts and bolts issues impacting practically every, every neighborhood in the city. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The docket 0242 will remain in committee. Thank you, Council Bock. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket 0195?
Docket number 0195, Order for a Hearing Regarding City Level Conservation Corps for
The chair recognizes Counsel Lara, Chair of the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, Parks. Counsel Lara, you have the floor?
Thank you, President Flynn. On Tuesday, March 29th, yesterday, the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks held a hearing regarding a city-level conservation corps that was sponsored by Counselor Bock. I was joined by my colleagues, Councilors Bock, Brayden, Luizhen, Murphy, Mejia, Worrell, and Council President Flynn. We were also joined by members of the administration, Chief Reverend Maryama Whitehammond, Executive Director of the Boston Power Corps, as newly named, the newly, the new name for our Youth Green Jobs Program, Commissioner Woods, Director Wen, and leadership from... green jobs program, Commissioner Woods, Director Wen, and leadership from Power Corps in Philadelphia. As a new counselor, this was an incredibly informative hearing for me, just to hear about the progress that we've made around the youth, the youth green jobs initiative and a timeline for implementation as well. I would like to cede the floor to the lead sponsor, and I recommend that this docket remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Lara. The Chair recognizes Councilor Bach. Councilor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I'll be brief, just, it was a great hearing, it's very exciting. This council, in our supplemental appropriation on June 30 of last year, put $3 million in the budget to make this program possible. And so it's been awesome to see it go from announcement in the Janey administration to a real flowering and hiring of the new executive director, Davo Jefferson, in the Wu administration, and to see the administration's commitment and just, I think, the real opportunity we have here to, to marry our goal of meeting climate justice with a real commitment to racial and economic justice, and getting these good green jobs for our young people in the city of Boston. I'm just really, really excited about it and looking forward to the ways that we can support and grow the program financially as it develops, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bach. Docket 0195 will remain in committee. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clark, please read docket 0435.
Docket number 0435, Councilors Louis Jeanne and Mahia offer the following: Petition for a special law reenact authorizing the city of Boston to grant four additional licenses for the sale of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the specified premises.
The Chair recognizes Councilor Louis Jeanne. Councilor Louis Jeanne, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my co-sponsor, Councilor Mahia, on this home rule petition. This is a home rule petition for four additional liquor licenses at the bowling building, so place restricted liquor licenses historically this body. And as a city, we know how hard it has been to get liquor licenses for our communities, especially in our Black and Brown communities, because of how expensive the liquor licenses are. And so these, this would be a request for four non-transferable restricted licenses. In the past, we've attempted to get a lot more dispersed around the city, and we have failed, even when the mayor has tried. So this is just petition for four liquor licenses. We hope to, in the future, work towards getting more liquor licenses to our neighborhoods, but this is just for the bowling building. We have some great businesses in that area, in Roxbury, that could really benefit from having those licenses. We also know that our colleague, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, has been doing really great work in D7, and this would really help the businesses in her district, make sure that they're able to make more money and revitalize, help to continue to revitalize the New Bean Square area with these liquor licenses, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Louis Jeanne. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Councilor Mahia. Councilor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my co-sponsor. We look forward to the opportunity to partner with the administration on securing four additional site-specific liquor licenses located right in the heart of Roxbury. The council has had in the past, voted to pass home rule petitions to allow site-specific liquor licenses, which has greatly benefited the community. The Charles River Speedway Administrative Building is a great example of that. This is an opportunity for not only to provide for additional liquor licenses to Roxbury neighborhood, but hopefully, this is also an opportunity for us to explore in greater detail the issue that this body has taken up many times, which is an equitable distribution of liquor licenses across the city. And I want to acknowledge our sister in service, now Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, when she was on the council, fought ferociously on making sure that our city had a, a real representation of liquor licenses. Unfortunately, a lot of those did not end up in, in Matapan, in Dorchester, and other parts of our most distressed neighborhoods. So I'm hoping that this is just the beginning of the revolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mahia. The Chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me say for the record that I appreciate the nuances involved as it pertains to the issue on, of liquor licenses. Said licenses do create a degree of economic viability for restaurants, but let me also state, to quote an old adage, that man does not live by bread alone. Simply stated, my deeply felt religious views and customs place me in a position of opposition, the partaking of spirits. As a practicing Muslim, we believe that the consumption of alcohol is a decision that is detrimental to health and well-being. However, recognizing the significance of this issue to many of our esteemed small business owners, I have stepped aside and allowed, or not allowed, but welcomed my sister, Julie Mahia and Rosie Louis Jeanne, to file in my stead. Hence, there is a duality at play here, for yours truly, where the importance of economical and spiritual realms are direct, indirect confrontation for me. And while I recognize that the economic realm is a great concern, I cannot compromise my core tenets and spiritual beliefs, and hence compromise an essential aspect of my being. Furthermore, while acknowledging that alcohol sales do constitute an engine to economic empowerment for restaurateurs, I believe that there is a plethora of healthier society, more appropriate ways to grow economy. I hope that such alternatives can be discussed and implemented, and as time progresses, we can work together to develop them. But for now, I stand strongly on my spiritual beliefs. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Docket 0435 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clark, please read docket 0436.
Docket number 0436, Councilor's, Councilor Braden offered the following: Order for a hearing on the state of Boston's non-governmental, nonprofit, social sector and charting a post-pandemic recovery.
The Chair recognizes Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the outset of the pandemic two years ago, it became clear how essential our city's community-based, non-governmental, nonprofit organizations are. Many of these social sector organizations quickly adapted their direct services to meet the moment, from rapid dissemination of information, food, and PPE, and serving as mutual aid networks, reaching thousands of our Boston neighbors. The nonprofit sector is no, also often known as the third sector, because they fill gaps to reach underserved communities, often overlooked by private and public sector services. The past two years have shown the importance of local governments' coordination with community-based nonprofits to collectively need, meet the needs of our residents. While many community nonprofits stepped up to serve our city, the entire nonprofit sector across the country has drastically taken a hit, with smaller locally-based organizations serving disadvantaged communities, often, often being most impacted. The country is experiencing what economists have dubbed the Great Resignation. Historic rates of workforce voluntarily leaving their jobs due to wage stagnation, rising cost of living and inflation, and outdated workforce culture, with smaller community-based, social services nonprofits being particularly impacted. The pandemic exacerbated many of the existing stressors, with real estate speculation. Long-standing nonprofits have struggled to remain in their office spaces. For example, the Brazilian Workers Center in Alston is threatened because of increasing rents, among many others. I'm sure many of my colleagues can cite other examples. Meanwhile, support for the, from, from the philanthropic sector often limits foundation grants to specific programmatic work, rather than general operating overhead costs like rent and paying employees a living wage suitable for the city. In January, the Treasury Department issued the final rule, which outlined the specified eligibility uses, eligible uses of ARPA funds, to include charitable nonprofit organizations as both recipients of assistance, as well as providers of assistance to others on behalf of the city. That means our goals of achieving an equitable recovery must, could maximize impact through partnerships with nonprofits who have existing infrastructure as trusted messengers to hard-hit communities. With federal funds, we have an opportunity to strengthen partnerships by supporting the incredible, incredibly important work, infrastructure, important infrastructure that community-based nonprofit organizations in our city provide, while also establishing infrastructure for long-lasting, transformative government非profit partnerships that could be sustained beyond recovery dollars. This is an essential step toward equitable and sustainable relief, recovery, and transformative future, and I look forward to holding a hearing to discuss envisioning that process by, for, for intentional investment in our city's nonprofit sector. I also, just today, on, on a similar theme and a related, related to this issue, Mayor Wu has just announced today that $38 million of, $38 million to support nonprofit organizations to provide services to individuals experiencing homelessness through, by supporting 15 nonprofit organizations that deliver critical services to support our unsheltered residents. The homelessness and housing instability is one aspect of the work that our nonprofit sector does. We have many nonprofits working on supporting families, supporting food access, literacy, and job training. There's a whole range of, of different, different functions that our nonprofit sector does that, and our nonprofit sector have been providing essential support for our communities over the past two years. And at this moment in time, it's a timely opportunity just to reflect on what they've done and how we can support them going forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Councilor Mahia. Councilor Mahia, you have the floor.
I just wanted to rise and thank Councilor Braden for her intentionality. You know, our office during, at the height of COVID, ended up working with a lot of nonprofit organizations, many of which were small mom-and-pop shops, oftentimes under-resourced and really doing the work without any real capacity. And I think when we're thinking about equity and we're thinking about making sure that we're supporting folks, we also need to be super mindful of who gets on that list and who's getting that support. And I think that that is an area that we may need to lean in a little bit more to ensure that organizations who oftentimes are doing more with less, have an opportunity to build their capacity. And I also think that, in terms of some of the work that we've experienced, and it's not just, there are a lot of folks who are running organizations that don't know how to speak English, but have managed to create miracles during COVID. And I think that, as we think about how we support folks, we, I always go back to this information justice situation, and making sure that people understand what's at stake and that we're doing our due diligence to build capacity. And so we're really looking forward to the hearing and leaning in, and welcome any way that we are able to support, and please add my name as, in sponsorship.
Thank, thank you, Councilor Mahia. Please add, Councilor Mahia. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clark, please add Councilor Arroyo, Councilor Bach, Councilor Edwards, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Lara, Councilor Louis Jeanne, Councilor Mahia, Council Murphy, Council Worell, and please add the chair. Docket 0436 will be referred to the Committee on Boston's COVID-19 Recovery. Mr. Clark, can we go back to 0435? I want to see if any of my colleagues want to sign on as a co-sponsor. Going back to docket 0435, I neglected to ask if anyone would like to add their name to that docket. If you would like to add your name, would you please raise your hand? Mr. Clark, please add Councilor Arroyo, please add Councilor Bach, Councilor Edwards, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Lara, Council Murphy, Council Worell, please add the chair. Thank you. Mr. Clark, please read docket 0437.
Docket number 0437, Councilor Braden offered the following: Resolution in support of House 3080-Senate 1874, an act relative to payments in lieu of taxation, pilot by organizations exempt from the property tax.
The Chair recognizes Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend Rule 12 in order to add Councilors Louis Jeanne and Councilor Bach, please, as original co-sponsors of this docket.
Not hearing any objection, please add those, Mr. Clark.
The proposed bill would provide a local option for cities and towns to adopt a standardized pilot program that is modeled after the city of Boston's pilot program for our non, our city's pilot program currently calls for tax-exempt educational, medical, and cultural organizations with property values in excess of $15 million to make voluntary payments equivalent to 25% of taxes that would be paid where they are not, where they not tax-exempt, with half of the payment in cash and half through in-kind community benefit contributions. However, our problem, our program lacks enforcement mechanisms, and many large institutions are out of compliance, with several continuously failing to meet their full requested cash payments. Passage of a statute mandating pilot payments would afford Boston a mechanism to hold accountable the large institutions who call Boston home. We, I urge my colleagues to join me in supporting this important bill and calling on the legislature to enact it. Mr. President, I seek to suspend the rules in passage of adoption of this resolution today, after my co-sponsors have an opportunity to speak on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Councilor Louis Jeanne. Councilor Louis Jeanne, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleague, Councilor Braden, for introducing this resolution. I am more than happy to be a co-sponsor on this, because we have a lot of work to do as a city to make sure that we are paying for the things that matter. We have a climate crisis on our hands, an affordable housing crisis, gotta deal with repairing a lot of the harm, policy harm that we've done here as a city. And so I think our institutions that are here that, you know, benefit from not being taxed, even though oftentimes they have very large endowments, should really be paying in to the capacity building that we have to do as a government, to do the things that we have to do. So I support this bill, and I'm, and I am glad to sign on to this resolution, so that cities and municipalities can have a local option to tax institutions in their cities. We depend so heavily on property taxes, obviously, and there's so much that we're missing out on when these large institutions don't have to pay in, and they need to be good neighbors. And so I'm grateful again to Councilor Braden for introducing this resolution, and very happy to co-sponsor and to continue to work on pilot here, to hold institutions accountable so that we can build the city that we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Louis Jeanne. The Chair recognizes Councilor Bach. Councilor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you to Councilors Braden and Louis Jeanne for allowing me to co-sponsor on this. I think it's so important that our large institutions, our hospitals and universities, pay their fair share in supporting the city, which all of our institutions depend on. I mean, it's a totally symbiotic relationship, and, and given how dependent we are on property tax, the reality is that we just, we can't have our very successful nonprofit institutions continue to take more and more parcels off the taxable rolls. It's just an unsustainable situation for the city fiscally. And so I'm really proud of the fact that the city back in 2009 sort of forged an initial way forward, and it was mentioned, it really is a model. A lot of other cities around the country and other municipalities in the Commonwealth have copied that program. But I think we've seen in the last few years, and I was proud to chair the pilot committee last term, like, that, you know, we're, we're running up against the challenge of, when everybody doesn't participate, then, you know, it makes the folks who are doing the right thing, who are paying their full pilot assessment, which, in terms of cash, is one-eighth of what you'd be paying if you were taxable, you know, it makes those folks feel like they're getting a raw deal because other people aren't stepping up and doing it. So I think the question of, what could we actually have as a local option that would authorize this as a more than voluntary arrangement, seems like a conversation that does need to be had at the state, even as I hope very much that, you know, we're able to reconvene a pilot task force under the mayor. That was something that happened under Minino. We were on the verge of doing it under both Walsh and Janey, and the transitions just proved too difficult. But I do think that, you know, in the meantime, while we wait for state legislation, we want to try to re-up the Boston conversation, because it's just so critical to our to try to re-up the Boston conversation because it's just so critical to our tax base. But certainly if this legislation that's up at the State House passed, it would give us a very strong legal basis for having a program that goes beyond the voluntary. And I just think, when you think about all the things Counsel Luizhen already listed that we have to pay for in the city, you know, the first time we talked about pilot, we talked about it, the way we ended up with the 25% number, which then, because they only have to pay half of that in cash, is really a 12.5% number, the way we got there was the idea that 25% of the city budget was fire, police, and snow. That was the sort of theory. And I think that since '09, the conversations really moved where more of our institutional partners would acknowledge, like, hey, we as institutions in the city, we have a stake in the city's school system. We have a stake in the city's public health. God knows, we all worked together through this crisis. You know, we have a stake in the streets and whether they're clean and whether they operate and whether it's safe to get from point A to point B, whether you're a pedestrian, a bicyclist, a motorist. So I think, like, we've embraced a bigger-picture understanding of how what we do in this building affects everybody in all of these institutions, and we need a pilot program that reflects that reality. So I'm really grateful for the opportunity to co-sponsor this resolution and urge colleagues to join to support today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, please add Counselor Edwards, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Murphy, Counsel Rell, please add the Chair. Counsel Braden seeks suspension of the rules in adoption of document 0437. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the resolution has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, please read document 0438.
Document number 0438, Counselor Braden offered the following: Resolution in support of House 3457 and Senate 2309, an act relative to electric bicycles.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend Rule 12 in order to add Counselors Luizhen and Counselor Bach as original co-sponsors of this document.
Seeing and hearing, no objections. Counsel Luizhen and Bach are added as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Counsel Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. The use of electric bicycles or e-bikes has grown rapidly over the past several years, and they expand mobility, particularly for seniors and people with disabilities. However, Massachusetts is one of four remaining states lacking adequate e-bike regulations, joining Alaska, New Mexico, and Rhode Island with a rating labeled problematic. The proposed bill would standardize regulations and grant e-bikes the legal classification necessary for implementing them as blue bikes in Boston. Several major cities have introduced e-bikes for their bike-share systems, including New York, San Francisco, Chicago, Philadelphia, and Seattle. The bill would provide legal options for municipalities with jurisdiction over shared-use paths to determine if, when, and where e-bikes are allowed. I urge my colleagues to join me in supporting this bill to improve mobility access for all. And, Mr. President, I would seek to suspend the rules in passage of adaptation of this resolution today after my co-sponsors have had an opportunity to speak on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The Chair recognizes Counsel Luizhen. Counsel Luizhen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor Braden, for introducing this resolution. E-bikes are great. Encourage folks to try them. We need to find, make sure that we are building a multimodal city and make sure that we are allowing for legal classification to allow them, so that we can continue to build out a multimodal city. I am not an e-biker. I am a biker, but I'm an e-scooter, and even that lacks classification here under state law. So there's a lot that we can, we need to do if we are committed to building a city that is open not just to cars, but to cars and bikes and e-bikes and scooters so that we can be multimodal as a city. So this is just the beginning. I know that the Boston Cyclists Union, they're the ones first introduced me to e-bikes and the issue of e-bikes here in the city, so credit to them and the work that they're doing. But yes, thank you for your leadership on this issue, Counsel Braden, and hopefully this will get through the state legislature so that we can have more e-bikes on our roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Luizhen. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks again to co-sponsors, Counselor Braden and Luizhen. I feel like e-bikes are just such an exciting thing in the sense that, you know, when we talk about really widening access to bicycling to a wider set of people, anywhere where you got to go up and down hills, like, you know, the fact that you can have that electronic assistance, it really gives more folks access. It helps more people use it as a reliable commuting option. And when we think about a city where frankly, delivery vehicles are currently choking our streets, the possibility of having, like, e-bike cargo delivery, like what the city's already looking at, is, it's exciting, and it's potentially a way to move a lot of people and goods more efficiently in a way that's more climate-friendly. But it's really important that the city take its, like, health and safety regulatory capacities on board on this, and the only way we can really do that is through state action that enables us to do that. Because the reality that we have seen in a bunch of jurisdictions is that when you don't do that, you know, when you have heavy utilization of, for instance, like, electric scooters and bicycles go up in an area, you do see more head trauma in emergency rooms, and that's because there's not necessarily a safe place on the street for them. It's because, you know, we don't have some of the same norms around helmet-wearing that we might want, and now things are going even faster. And also, you know, I always think at the top of the Vision Zero pyramid is the pedestrian, and I think it becomes all that much more important that we have our bicycles and other electric vehicles off of the sidewalks and onto their own street space, but we can only do that and have those riders be safe if we're also making them safe on the street. And just fundamentally, the city's hands are tied a bit in the way that, like, we can regulate the space and organize and really enable that multimodal future that my colleague talked about until there's actually a category. Because right now, by law, like, the e-bike doesn't exist. There's, like, bicycles and there's cars, but this kind of in-between category of something that can go faster than is safe to be on the sidewalk, but where people are not as protected as they are in a two-ton vehicle, that's not really like a category that exists by law. So I'm grateful that our colleagues up at the State House are trying to make that category exist so that we can then do our work as a city and regulate it at municipal level, and I hope that they'll be successful. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. And from the Chair to the sponsor, Counsel Braden, just one question. On e-bikes, is there a helmet requirement or a speed limit requirement?
I think this is... I think you asked a great question. I think the issue is really that... We are asking that this issue will be looked at at the state level, and they will determine those issues. It's really just to put it into the conversation and establish some norms around e-bikes, because as Counselor Bach said, they're not even recognized as a form of vehicular transportation right now.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty and then Counsel Bach. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please add my name. I've tried and tested one of these things. You may have seen the video.
All right.
The poor bike. I'll leave it at that. But so I think that its time has come, and hopefully someday I'll own five of them. But in the meantime, I support my colleague and I support this resolution, so please add my name.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. No one's questioning you, but I'm gonna have, we're gonna have to take a look at the video tonight, Counsel Flaherty, to see you on the e-bike. Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach.
I was just gonna say, in also response to your question, so basically, the challenge right now is that we're not, the state has not given us permission to have slightly e-bike-specific regulations. And so that's part of what this would do, is it would allow us to address all those issues. And the proposed legislation also actually makes distinctions depending on what type of e-bike they are in the sense of how fat, what their maximum speed is and stuff, because that's in many ways the really important thing. So something that's basically a regular bicycle that just gives you, like, a little electric-assist push when you're going up a hill is not going to be treated by the state law the same way as something that can take you 30, 40 miles an hour or so.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. Anyone else like to speak on this matter or add your name? Please raise your hand. Please add Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Baker, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Lara, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Rell, please add the Chair as well. Counsel Braden seeks suspension of the rules in adoption of document 0438. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the resolution has passed, has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, please read document 0439.
Document number 0439, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson and Counselor Arroyo offered the following: Order for a hearing to explore a digital marketplace pilot program.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Brian Rell as a co-sponsor as well, please.
Seeing and hearing, no objection. Counsel Rell is added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. The post-COVID world has seen windfall profits accrue to giant corporations. While our small businesses have suffered shuttered doors, skyrocketing rents, and devastating diminution of sales, Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Rell, and myself are here today to address this disturbing economic reality and to begin the process of introducing an idea to the city, why digital marketplace that will benefit our BIPOC small business owners, and this to include, of course, business owners of lower income as well, and seek to counteract the domination of international corporates and the realm of local commerce in our communities. Such a digital marketplace, if properly implemented and sustained, could be an integral tool to support our beloved small businesses, lest they perish due to their lack of online presence, always problematic, but particularly devastating in the midst of a pandemic. As such, a city-led intervention to create conditions of economic empowerment for our local entrepreneurs strikes me as a vital task that we should commence. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Rell. Counsel Rell, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you to my co-sponsors, Counsel Anderson and Counsel Arroyo. And as we think of, and create tools to help small businesses, we know that establishing an online presence is becoming more crucial for businesses as consumers have changed their way on how they buy goods, whether it's for a house, a car, a book, even groceries, it's all happening online. This is another creative pilot by Counsel, my co-sponsor is Counsel Arroyo and Counsel Anderson, and I'm looking forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rell. The Chair recognizes Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, for this, and my co-sponsor, Counsel Rell. We know, I used to know this number off the top of my head, but I think it's something like 80% plus of our small businesses in the city of Boston are immigrant, people of color owned, small businesses, because often when you are coming to a new country, you have to make your own job. And so they are a large driver of our local economies, our local identities. And we know that when we had the question about the big-box corporation stores, Walmart, Mayor Menino, one of the things I actually very much enjoyed about him was his not allowing Walmart to ever really set foot in Boston because of the damage it would do to small businesses. And we know that when we look at the new sort of metric of what is doing damage to our small businesses, it's online commerce, it's things like Amazon sort of crowding out our small businesses. If there's a way for us to create an online marketplace that takes a lot of the heavy lifting off of our small businesses in terms of the creation and maintenance of a website, but allows them to compete in a similar way, that only brings dollars back to our local communities. And again, it's these small businesses that are sponsoring our little leagues, our school dance recitals, our schools, all the things that I go to. I always go to my small businesses. I don't go to the Target in my district. I don't go to those areas because generally speaking, the money for our neighborhoods always comes from the folks who live in it and work in it. And so I look forward to finding any way we can to strengthen our local businesses and our small businesses, and I think this will be a nice step towards exploring whether or not we can do that in the online space. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Anyone else looking to add their name? The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. President, sorry about that. I really want to thank the co-sponsors for this important, bringing this issue forward. Last year, we had a hearing about the issue of Grubhub and other platforms that were interjecting their presence into our small businesses and acting as a middle, a middleman to, and taking a huge cut on a fee from our restaurants. And again, last week, I was on a walk in our Main Streets district with Chief Sagon Idou, and one of the issues that came up was the restaurants talking about this experience of having a very significant fee taken from their bottom line by the delivery services. So I think that having this conversation about a digital marketplace for our small businesses in the city is a very timely one, and thank you. Please add my name.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Please add Counsel Braden's name. Would anyone else like to speak on it? Or the Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, you have the floor.
You know, I'm always gonna rise on everything and anything that my sister over there puts forth, because it's this type of innovation that we need more of here in the City of Boston, and kind of so I'm really encouraged by your leadership in this space, and thank you to your co-sponsors for joining you. I know I always keep talking about COVID because that's the only reference that I have, that a lot of our small businesses, many who struggle with reading and writing, even in their own native language, really struggle to have access to information. And as we start thinking about creating this digital platform, really being super intentional about how we can use it in a way that's utilizing videos and audio and visuals to help the consumer being able to navigate what this could look like. And also, I think as we continue to have this conversation, is the resources that we're gonna pour into to helping to support our small business to be able to be set up for success. So I think there's some work that we need to do on the council in terms of advocacy to ensure that we're setting up the administration for success. And I also think there's such an amazing opportunity to include some of these business owners to helping design what it could look like in terms of a user experience. So I'm really grateful for your leadership and looking forward to supporting this. And I am encouraged to what is to come if you continue to roll these out. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mahia. Would anyone else like to add their name? Please raise your hand. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
Very quickly, thank you for that point. I'm really excited because imagine a world that it's not Grubhub, it's our own, and yes, I have to say more. So imagine a world where it's like you have this digital platform and you combine it with a back office for Main Streets, and I'm so excited because so many of you have done some of this work and looking forward to expand, and also have partnered with Chief Idou and the administration, looking at the possibilities. So the conversation about merging technical assistants coming from Main Streets as an executive director and understanding this thing in and out, I think that it's very exciting, and I'm, thank you so much for your support.
Anyone else like to speak or add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Bach. Please add Counsel Lara, Counsel Luizhen, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Flaherty, please add the Chair. Document 0439 will be referred to the Committee on Small Business Professional Licensor. Since this hearing is focused on small business in other aspects, it is appropriate for us to go into that committee. Mr. Clerk, please read document 0440.
Document number 0440, Counsel Murphy offered the following: Order for a hearing to address the lack of athletic opportunities for our students.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Luizhen and also my colleague Counselor Braden as original co-sponsors.
Seeing and hearing, no objection. Mr. Clerk, please add those two city councils.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy.
Thank you. So I'm calling for this hearing because our public school students deserve a full range of athletic opportunities. In nearby towns like Concord, the public school department spends $821 per student on athletic programs for their kids. The state average is $161, but here in Boston, we only spend $76... The state average is $161, but here in Boston, we only spend $76 per student. That is less than one-third of 1% of the $1.3 billion school budget. And it's not like we're not spending money. In fact, at close to $24,000 per student, Boston spends more per pupil than most other cities and towns in the state. $24,000 per student, and we can't find a few hundred dollars for our children, I think it's not right. This is a shameful statistic and a sad reminder of just how poorly our public schools are doing at fulfilling its responsibility to the holistic education and mental health supports that our children need so badly. The current state of the BPS athletics program is not good. Too many middle and high schools have only a small handful of teams, and some schools have no athletic programs at all. For the schools that do offer sports, the funding, resources, and guidance from BPS central office is severely lacking. The recent closure of the highly successful Scholar-Athletes Program by its private funders adds to the loss of meaningful school sports for most of our public school students. The problem, like so many problems plaguing our public school system, is not funding. We have the money. What we need is the will and the leadership to follow through. Teachers, coaches, and volunteer parents work so hard for our kids. This has to stop, and I will fight for our students here on the council. It's the right thing to do, because we know that sports are good for everyone. Sports provide our children with way more than just the opportunity to exercise their bodies. The physical benefits are just the beginning. There are social, health, and physiological benefits that allow our kids to do better in life. Kids who participate on school teams are far more likely to have improved grades, better school attendance, report healthier social behavior, and to reach higher academic and professional success after high school. As a mother of student athletes, Go Dragons, who benefited in so many ways from their time on school teams, and as a public school teacher, who knows that educating the whole child has to include physical and social wellness to be successful, I will fight for school sports for our kids. Boston Public School kids need this outlet for their social and mental health now more than ever. And I believe we should be doing everything possible to get our Boston Public School sports back on track. Our own kids have the will, the talent, and the right to all the wonderful lifelong benefits that sports offer. I hope today my colleagues will join us on this and join the fight to be there for our Boston Public School students every step of the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Louie Jean. Counsel Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counsel Murphy for introducing this hearing order. You know, the current focus of BPS, and I think we should be doing, is adding a lot more school counselors, family liaisons, social workers, and we are headed in that direction, and we need to continue to push in that direction. For a lot of us who go and visit schools, you know, Madison Park, you go and you hear students complain about the lack of sport options, a lack of teams that they once had that have been taken away. We need to make sure that we are addressing the whole child, which means their emotional, social, and physical intellect. We also know that making sure that our students have access to sports helps to deal with the issue, issues of absenteeism. That's both for just sports and for arts. The more that we allow our students to exercise different parts of their lives in the school building, the better it is. And we're talking about all these capital improvements that we need to make to our schools. Almost 25% of our schools don't have gym facilities, right? And we're in a city with world-class sports teams. That disparity of being in a city that, with those teams, but yet having schools that don't have any teams at all, and that don't have the physical structure to support that is unacceptable. And so I'm in support of this hearing order, so that we can see what we can do to support more sports in our schools, and to make sure that we are supporting our students as a whole. Thank you, and thank you, Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Counsel Louie Jean. The Chair recognizes Counsel Lara. Counsel Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and I want to extend my gratitude to the sponsors of this hearing order.
Okay, okay.
Sorry. Talking to me. I first want to add my name to it, please, if I can. As a student athlete myself, both through BPS and in college, I understand the importance of investing in our student athletes and investing in BPS to make sure that all of our students have access to sports. I wanted to rise to talk particularly about the problem of our fields and our athletic fields in the city. As the Chair of the Environmental Justice Resiliency and Parks Committee, our office has been working with a lot of the youth sports organizations in the city to have a conversation around how we can increase access to our athletic fields. And so I think that this is a perfect place for collaboration and a perfect place to extend conversations. I think that BPS provides a lot of the athletics for our young people, but we have Pop Warner, we have JPU Soccer, and all of the other teams that ultimately provide respite for our young people during the summer and after-school hours. So we have to have a conversation around the financial investment, but we also have to think about the structural investment. How are we making sure that we have athletic fields and parks available in all of our neighborhoods to all of our students and to all of the places in the city of Boston who are providing enrichment to our students and our young people? So I look forward to collaborating with the sponsor on that issue as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lara. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, I failed to call on you earlier as an original co-sponsor, so I apologize.
Mr. President, I was a late addition, and I want to thank Counselor Murphy for adding me as a co-sponsor. I'll speak to this issue. I really do feel that school sports are a vital component of a healthy development of young people. And I'll speak to my own experience. When I was 14 years old, my father passed away very suddenly, and it was my participation in school sports that really was a lifeline for me as a young person facing a sudden loss in my life and for my family. And the school sports teams, my fellow teammates, my coaches, and my teachers involved in the sports realm were instrumental in helping me weather that time in my life. And I really do understand how vitally important it is for our young people to have access to sports in school. Many of them don't have other opportunities to join clubs and the Y or whatever. So school sports is a critical lifeline. I also, thinking about our earlier conversation about pilot and our relationship with our institutions or educational institutions in the city, I really feel that we, this hearing of order also offers an opportunity to perhaps explore potential opportunities for our local schools to partner with our local colleges to access some of their incredible world-class sports facilities in the offseason when there's no students in town. We have a lot of resources in the city of Boston. My colleague, Counselor Flaherty, speaks about this all the time. We have so many world-class institutions, incredible educational opportunities for higher and further education, but we really need to pay attention to our public school population in the city. And I also want to give a big shout-out to Boston High School teams, Go Bengals. They do us proud every time they hit the field. So thank you so much. I really welcome this opportunity and think it's a really critical part of a well-rounded education for our young people in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please add my name. Come in. The lead sponsor and the co-sponsors, as mentioned, sports in general, keeps kids in school, keeps them away from drugs and alcohol and gangs. It fosters competition, sportsmanship, school pride, friendships, not to mention the potential for college scholarships, and if folks are really that good, potential drafts, and maybe even an opportunity to have a professional career. The state of school sports with respect to the BPS is in complete disarray. The fact that we had teams that were not able to compete in the MIAA because of whether it was a clerical or administrative issue, whatever the issue was, not only was it a statewide embarrassment, probably a national embarrassment, those kids missed out on an opportunity, the buck stops at the top with the athletic director. I challenge my colleagues to try to get in touch with the athletic director. Good luck. I think the lights are on, no one's home. So more than appropriate to have a hearing on the status of the Boston Public School sports. School sports is a game changer for kids for a whole multitude of reasons, and why we are not more competitive, why we are not providing more opportunities for kids in schools as it pertains to their athleticism and the connection. There's a whole program, former State Representative Kevin Fitzgerald created, "Sports in Society" over at Northeastern. They've done great work over there. And the link between folks that are playing sports, and again, that could be on the ice, that could be on the field, that could be at the gym, that could be anywhere you want, in the pool. School sports in general can change the trajectory of someone's life on a number of fronts. And so time has come to address this issue, so I'll look forward to that. Hopefully, it'll be an expedited hearing, because as we're heading into the budget season, some folks need to answer some questions regarding the state of affairs with respect to school sports in Boston Public Schools. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Counsel Meheer. Counsel Meheer, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you to the makers for this very important conversation, you know. I'm not going to hijack it, but I will just say, you know, there are a lot of young people who are working two to three jobs that can't participate in athletics. And I just want to name that, as we start thinking about this conversation, is that we really need to look at some of the things that prevent young people from participating in sports. And so that should be a part of the conversation in terms of how we're going to remove barriers so that young people can actually participate. Because otherwise, you know, it's just another conversation about another conversation. And I think that we need to really remove barriers so everybody could participate. And then the other piece that I'd like to just uplift is that I've gotten so many phone calls from folks who are looking for access to gyms, who are doing not school sports, but like are trying to supplement and create space for folks to be able to, for young people in particular, to continue to participate in sports. And so I think there is an opportunity for the city to recognize the role that they play in opening up some of the centers and working more collaboratively with other folks, nonprofits. There are places and spaces that I think we need to include in this conversation, so that it goes beyond the school sports, but that we're looking at 360, and that everybody is here to participate and create space for that sort of well-rounded opportunity for all kids. So thank you. And please add my name.
Please add Counsel Meheer's name. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Murphy, I think this is a phenomenal idea. It's fantastic. Everything that you've been talking about and doing around mental health and education, amazing ideas. You sit there and all of this brilliance comes out, and I can't wait to collaborate or talk to you more about it. And we've been talking to Berkeley and a few other schools about bringing in music and facilities as well. And like my colleague Meheer saying, we get calls about opening up gyms and facilities and possibly, you know, doing like, how do Muslim young girls swim separate from, or whatever? So access and talking about that. I just want to say, like, as, so for me, sports saved my life. I grew up in a projects, everybody knows the story, right? I came immigrant, poor, I had to work two jobs. I was in, throughout middle school and high school, I, fun fact, I actually practiced martial arts for 10 years. So doing that martial arts, being in sports, and for all those years, yes, I can kick butt, no, I'm kidding. So doing that all those years, and it really did save my life. Like, I had a sabunem, a trainer, that would really, literally, like, whip my behind if I didn't keep up to school. And then when I grew, as I became a young parent, I put my kids in MECO, right? So my oldest was an athlete, and they went to Weston, the best school in Massachusetts. Like, when I say the best, you walk through, literally, it's an emotional experience to see all of the facilities that they have, everything, how I get involved as a parent there in Weston, and then to have clients in BPS and see the difference, the stark difference, it's very depressing. I look forward to working with you on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. I would also like to thank Counsel Murphy in the, for her work on this important issue. Sports in school is critical. During the pandemic, our students suffered, didn't have access, the right access to sports, and it really hurt their development. I think it hurt their development, especially academically, certainly, certainly physically and mentally as well. But when we hear that there's 25% of students that don't have access to an athletic gym at a school, that's outrageous. We had a conversation, I know Counsel Braden mentioned it, we had a conversation on pilot a few minutes ago, but we also have to get our colleges and universities more involved. I'd be embarrassed if I was a college president right now, hearing this, hearing this topic of being discussed here, knowing that Boston Public School students don't have access to a gym. If I were a college president, I'd call the mayor up in five minutes and say, what can we do to be helpful? How do we get involved? How do we donate more money? So as a parent of a son that's in the BPS and plays sports, sports is critical. So I just want to thank my colleagues, especially Counsel Murphy, for leading on this important issue, and just following up on a comment of Counsel Flaherty. It's important for us during the council budget process to effectively advocate for spending for BPS athletic programs, to see where that money is going, and to have the athletic director of BPS here testifying in person about what the, about the state of affairs at BPS sports. So just want to say thank you to my colleague, Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, everyone. I do just want to thank you for bringing that to our attention. And I want to make sure that when we are in these working sessions, the conversation needs to include what athletics are being offered during the school day also, if it's before school or during the day, and also not limiting to traditional sports, that we're making sure we're including color guard, dance, cheer, martial arts, that we're not just thinking boys playing hockey, or like crew, all of these. So thank you. And also, the open spaces will definitely be a concern, because if you visit schools and you walk through the door, they look very different, some don't have gyms at all, and making sure that, how do we get to use those spaces? If it's the park next door, or if it's getting into the gym, I know there's issues around union and custodians opening the doors, and we've had many of those conversations during COVID, with hoping that BCYF could get back into spaces and knowing the importance of our kids playing athletics. So thank you, everyone, and I look forward to our work ahead.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. If you'd like to add your name, please raise your hand. Please add Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Baker, Counsel Bock, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Meheer, Counsel Rorwell, and please add the Chair. Docket 0440, refer to the Committee on Education. Personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0441.
Docket number 0441, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Bock.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules, passage of docket 4441. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0442.
Docket number 0442, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules, passage of docket 0442. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are four late file matters. The late file matters include one, home rule petition, two resolutions, one hearing order. The late files should be in everyone's desk, on everyone's desk. We'll take a vote to add these items into the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late files matters into the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The late file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, please read the first late file matter into the agenda, which is the home rule petition, please.
Offered by Counselors Lydia Edwards and Counsel Ed Flynn, petition for a home rule petition, excuse me, home rule petition for a special law relative to an act regarding the disability pension for Elena McAllister. Elena McAllister sustained life-threatening injuries while in the performance of her duties as a Boston emergency medical technician, when she was violently attacked and stabbed multiple times while rendering first aid to a patient during ambulance transport. And as a result, is incapacitated from further service as an emergency medical technician. Be it ordered that a petition to the General Court accompanied by a bill for a special law relating to the city of Boston to be filed with an attested copy of this order, be and hereby is approved under Clause 1 of Section 8 of Article 2, as amended of the Articles of Amendment to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and to the to the end, that legislation be adopted precisely, except for clerical or editorial changes of form only.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I rise in support of an essential worker, of a public servant, of someone who was simply doing her job in East Boston, and when doing her job due to the mentality or mental illness of the person she was trying to help, she was stabbed multiple times. As a result of those injuries, she, and we will find, is unable to do the work anymore as an EMS worker. This is part of normal process that we have in the City Council, where those who have sustained injuries, police officers, firefighters, EMS workers on the job, they are then retired disabled. She is now retired disabled. But in order for her to, I believe, fully be compensated for all of the work that she's done, she can file this home rule petition, which allows her to go from 80% compensation to 100% compensation. That's what this is seeking. We need a special law in order to do that. We will have a hearing where her medical records will be reviewed by you, and well, she will demonstrate to this body that she is permanently incapacitated and unable to do this law. Now, this has been somewhat controversial because people wondered, well, you know, this seems unfair. What's really an injury and so on and so forth? And we had copious amounts of conversations, and we've come down to kind of grouping and looking at these issues. One is making sure that the person isn't permanently tired and getting 100% disability, and then able to go do the same job someplace else. So, for example, police officers, if you're not going to do law enforcement, you cannot do law enforcement, you shouldn't be able to get 100% retirement and then go to Georgia or go to Virginia and then become a police officer there. This follows that as well. She is not going to be working in EMS services for anybody, anywhere, going forward. The other thing we wanted to fix was the fact that there is a certain level of income capped that you can make in the state law. That's $15,000. So, while you're getting 100% of your salary on disability for retirement for the rest of your life, by state law, you're capped at working a second job and making more than $15,000. And that was a big controversy for us because that's not even minimum wage. So, if somebody happened to go back and get a job or go back to school and made some kind of extra money, not in the field that they're retired from, the max that they could ever make is $15,000. So, we, as a body, have started to implement a higher cap of $100,000, allowing them to get a second job or to work someplace else, still collect their disability and make $100,000. Essentially, I wanted to use note that this is following exactly what we've done before. It also requires her to check in on her disability as well. She is not exempt from that and being able to confirm that she's still permanently disabled and unable to work. So, this is following along with what we have passed in this body before. The vetting will be the same as it has been before. I will, however, check with her about, and her union, as to whether she will testify. You must understand, this is a PTSD. This is triggering for her to talk about what she has gone through, and if she cannot talk about it, I am asking that this body be willing to accept her medical records and the testimony of the union, specifically about what she's gone through. There's no point in having someone go through this suffering again. So, again, I've offered this home rule petition with Counsel Flynn, another great supporter of our EMS and public safety workers in this body, with the hopes that we will be able to present this, pass this, and then get it over to the State House so that hopefully our sponsors on that side will be able to make sure that she is retired with 100% disability. Also worth noting, she is the primary breadwinner in her family. Her husband is not, so that is another reason why she, we would need to increase to 100%. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Royal. I think Counsel Edward's said it perfectly about the issue before us. Ms. McAllister really is a hero in our city, putting her life on the line for us at a very difficult time here in the city. So, you know, we're not, she's not asking for any type of special favor from us, she's just asking us to treat her fairly and to treat her with respect. So, the EMS community, they play a critical role in our city. These EMS technicians and professionals do an outstanding job, very difficult job, and unsung heroes really in our city. So, you know, I obviously support this along with Counsel Edward's and look forward to the hearing as well. Thank you, Counsel Edwards, for the important work that you've done on this issue.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Seeing no discussion, would anyone else like to add their name? Please, Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Baker, please add Counsel Bach, please add Counsel Braden, please add Counsel Fernandez Anderson, please add Counsel Flaherty, please add Counsel Lara, please add Counsel Louis Jen, please add Counsel Mahia, please add Counsel Murphy, please add Counsel Rell, and please add my name. The first late file matter will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the second late file into the record?
Second late file matter, resolution recognizing women veterans during Women's History Month offered by Counselors Ed Flynn and Lydia Edwards, whereas women currently comprise nearly 20% of serving military personnel and 10% of the veteran population. However, many women veterans do not receive proper recognition for their services and face a host of issues when they re-enter civilian life. Now, therefore, be it ordered that the Boston City Council furnish its support for women veterans and honors their service, bravery, and sacrifice they have made towards the City of Boston and our country.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Royal. Counsel Royal, may I suspend Rule 12 and add Counsel Murphy as an original co-sponsor?
Seeing no objections, Counsel Murphy is added as an original co-sponsor.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Royal. This is one of the, this resolution is something I've done with Counsel Edward's for four years now, and I do it because March is Women's History Month, but we also know that the incredible role women veterans play in our country, and they're not afforded the same level of respect and dignity that male veterans receive when they come back from active duty. I always like to partner with Counsel Edward's because her mother is a veteran, and she knows much better than anyone on the critical role women play in our military, but more importantly, that, the challenges women veterans have when they return from active duty. I know Counsel Edward's can describe that. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to attend a Women's Veterans Roundtable Discussion with Counsel Murphy and Mayo Wu on this issue. But I know when I go to the VA in Jamaica Plain in West Roxbury, the VA in Boston is actually pretty good, but nationally, we have a poor record in support of women veterans. Women veterans need gender-specific medical care, full access to medical care. 25% of women veterans are victims or survivors of MST, which is Military Sexual Trauma. We have to make sure women veterans also have received these services and programs that they have earned as well. So, I'm going to stop there and give my colleagues an opportunity to discuss this important issue, and I hope my colleagues will support this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. The Chair recognizes Counsel Edwards.
Thank you very much. I'm an Air Force brat. I was born on St. Patrick's Air Force Base, December 13, 1980. They delivered myself, my sister, and everybody else born in December in large stockings to our families. And my mother is the veteran, and oftentimes, I have to correct people when I say I'm a military brat because they want to talk about the father, my father did in terms of this country. So, 23 years she served this country. She joined during Vietnam, and she left during Iraq One. She, like many women, have MST, and I am just now learning about the military sexual trauma that my mother and many other women have gone through. It is not 25%. That is a low count. It is extremely high, and you cannot imagine the sense of violation that you feel when you are serving your country and you're willing to die for the nation, and that the colleague that is next to you has either raped you, traumatized you in such a way, and treated you as a less-than-human being. And somehow, some way, you're supposed to continue to work with them. Roseanne Trefoni Masukelli from Winthrop is the head, the director of Women's, or Veteran Services in Winthrop, and she was a military police officer, and she also survived MST. And when she came, and this is what ties us into this particular conversation, when she came to the outpost officer when she was decommissioning and discussing her MST, that officer then told her, well, you're a police officer, you should have been able to protect yourself. That's how she was received as a patriot. That's how her trauma was treated because she was a woman. So, it is how we are receiving, how we're respecting, how we're honoring, and how we're protecting our women veterans as they have to unpack traditional PTSD from having served in this country and sometimes at war, but also MST PTSD. I want to bring that up because in so many cases, so much of our society hasn't adjusted for them. They were still trying to come up with babysitting for myself and my sister on the military bases because my mother was a single mom. They were trying to come up with different ways to always adjust for the fact that mothers are serving in the military. Women are here, and honestly, it's been formal for the last, maybe since the 1930s, but women have always been part of every single war ever in this world, and women have served, protected, fought, and died for their countries or their communities. So, I just want to say I'm very excited about continuing this conversation about the contributions of some of the most patriotic people, and reminding people that, you know, those of us, those military bats born to women veterans, we have a special small club of us where we got to see our mothers put on combat boots and high heels and kick ass. And thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Chair now recognizes Counsel Murphy.
Thank you. And as the Chair of Veterans and Military Families, I'm proud to join Counsel Flynn and Counsel Edward's on this. Supporting our veterans is vitally important, but our women veterans, we know, have different needs, so to make sure that we're supporting and advocating our women veterans is very important. So, thank you for letting me join you in this, and I look forward to the work ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Seeing no discussion, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Baker, please add Counsel Bach, please add Counsel Braden, please add Counsel Fernandez Anderson, please add Counsel Flaherty, please add Counsel Lara, please add Counsel Louis Jen, please add Counsel Mahia, please add Counsel Rell, and please add my name. Counsel Flynn and Edwards and Murphy, seek suspension of the rules and adoption of the second late file matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the resolution has been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Counsel Royal. Mr. Clerk, please read the third late file matter into the agenda, which is the resolution from Counsel Edward's and Counsel Mahia, please.
Resolution offered by Counsel Lydia Edwards and Counsel Julia Mahia, whereas Boston Logan Airport contracted service workers such as aircraft cleaners, security guards, ramp agents, cargo agents, wheelchair agents for elderly and disabled passengers, and baggage handlers help ensure that the airport is safe, healthy, and well-functioning for the traveling public. And be it resolved that the Boston City Council recognizes airport service workers for their essential contributions during the pandemic and supports them in advocating for a family-sustaining wage, and further urges the Massachusetts Port Authority to pass a higher wage standard so that current and future workers see Boston Logan Airport as an attractive and stable place to work.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Edward's. Counsel Edward's, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I'll be brief. We all stood, predominantly all of us stood just right before this meeting in support of these workers and heard directly from the workers from 32BJ and those who are desperate to make sure that they're part of a union about why it's so important that this body speak in solidarity for their dignity, for their respect, and make sure that no one thinks ever that they are unseen by us or underappreciated by this body. So, having said a lot of things already, and the fact that I know that many of my colleagues were there in solidarity, I'm going to go ahead and just ask that we move to suspend the rules and vote for this formally right now in order for this resolution to pass, and I hope that you will join me in doing so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, you have the floor.
Yeah. Thank you, and thank you to Counsel slash Senator Edwards for sponsoring this resolution. And by now, you are already, you know, I always talk about the fact that my mom is 73 years old and still too poor to retire because she's never been able to join a union, and we've seen the power of a good union job can make these days. And so, I just think, I'm sure all my colleagues are going to join us. It was incredibly an honor to be able to speak to the crowd of 32BJ workers earlier today, and you could tell by speaking with them that they were passionate and determined when it came to standing up for their rights, for working class. It often feels like we're living in a tale of two cities, and I'm just baffled that how could it be that airlines across the country reported billions of dollars in profit through 2021, and yet our airline workers are still expected to live off of $15 an hour? That is just financial abuse. I just don't understand how that is possible. You know, I said during our rally earlier, and I want to say it here again, that I want to challenge anyone who are passengers and folks who are traveling through Logan Airport to look around you. The floors did not clean themselves, your baggage did not get on the flight on its own, and the work that was done by the hard-working people you see here out there fighting this morning, those are the ones who are behind that. So, it's really important for us to recognize that not only do our workers deserve our respect, but above all, they deserve a livable wage. When you look at the discrepancies and you look at the fact that people can't even afford to live here in the City of Boston, but yet they have to work two to three jobs just to make their ends meet, that conversation needs to be uplifted. And as a council, one thing is to show our solidarity and show up, and the other piece of that work is making sure that we continue to put pressure wherever that pressure needs to be if we're going to move this work forward, because I guess that a lot of folks are just tired of having the same conversation and expecting different results. And we need to hold those who are profiting off the backs of the hard labor of our people to recognize the role that they play and the responsibility that they have to increase these wages so that everyone can afford to stay here in the City of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mahia. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, President Flynn, and please add my name on this. I just wanted to stress how important I think this is as like a model. So, for folks who may not know, you know, 32BJ and others have fought hard to get this floor across all subcontractors at Massport, and I think it's really important to stress, though, like, in today's environment, what keeps happening is that our unions have organized hard with our big institutions, and they get unionized workforces, and then those institutions just outsource the work to other folks not covered. And so, this fight for a floor at Massport that says, whatever the subcontractor is, you really got to be paying this livable wage, that was a huge win. And the reality is, is that that win is being inflated away. Right now, that ceiling is only at $15 an hour, and now minimum wage in this state has risen to $14.25, so where that floor used to be two bucks or more above the minimum wage, now that gap has decreased, and it hasn't been continuing to rise. So, I think this is so important for us to support today because I think frankly, this battle really sort of should have already been won back when Massport committed to that higher ceiling many years ago, and just they haven't been keeping up with it. But I also want to stress that, like, to me, it seems like a model as we look across the city at places where the, you know, the reaction to the union sector has been to push more and more jobs into the non-union sector, to really talk about like sectoral bargaining and places where we can say, look, like Bostonians need to make of the kind of wage that can sustain a family in this town. So, I just, I'm really grateful to 32BJ and all of the workers for their leadership on this, and I hope the council can not only support this today, but also support efforts like this in sectors all across the city. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Please, you want your name added too?
Yes, please.
Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Anyone else like to add their name? Please add Counsel Royal, Counsel Baker, Counsel Bach, Counsel Braden, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Jen, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Rell, and please add the Chair. Counsel Edward's and Counsel Mahia seek suspension of the rules and adoption of second late matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Mr. Clerk, please read the fourth late matter into the record, which is the hearing order from Councilor Lara and Councilor Ujien.
Fourth late file matter offered by Councilors Kendra Lara and Ruthie Ujien. Order for a hearing regarding the state of affordable housing in Boston's inclusionary development policy, whereas the city's, city of Boston's inclusionary development policy was created in 2000 to promote the production of affordable housing in Boston, and it continues to be a critical tool for creating and funding income-restricted housing. And therefore, be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council order hearing to discuss the IDP inclusionary zoning and methods to ensure a greater percentage of affordable units, income guidelines that create truly affordable units for Boston households, and requirements for family-sized units permanent affordability and affordability in smaller developments. Representatives from the Boston Planning and Development Agency, Mayor's Office of Housing, Office of Fair Housing and Equity, Affordable Housing Organizations, Community Groups, and Other Interested Parties are invited to testify. The hearing will also discuss immediate changes to the IDP before a new study is complete, ways to ensure a robust study and substantial community input in the impact of developments currently under review.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Councilor Lara. Councilor Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and apologies to my colleagues, and thank you for sticking with us as we're moving through these late files. President Flynn, I would like to suspend Rule 12 and add Councilor Bach as one of the original co-sponsors.
Seeing and hearing, no objection. Councilor Bach has added. The Chair recognizes Councilor Lara.
Thank you so much, President Flynn. For me, as Councilor Mejia mentioned at our, one of our last hearings, the personal has always been political. And during my campaign run, I think that we were all made aware, as was the entire city through a very detailed Boston Globe article, of my own struggles with housing and security. And so it's a great honor for me to be the Chair of the Housing and Community Development Committee here on the City Council. I'm also a beneficiary of our inclusionary development policy here in the city of Boston. The only reason why my family and I are able to not only afford to stay in the city, but afford to stay living in the neighborhood where I grew up in Jamaica Plain, is because I'm a beneficiary of one of the lottery spots inside of one of these luxury apartment buildings. And so this is something that's very near and dear to my heart, and I'm really excited to present it to the City Council. For the past two months, our office has been in active conversation with community members and housing advocates to ultimately create a collective strategy for the Housing Committee that wouldn't only be coming from me, but would be coming from the people who are most directly impacted by the housing crisis. This strategy would include codifying the relationship between landlord and tenants, expansion of social housing and public housing in the city of Boston, land reclamation, zoning, anti-speculation legislation, implementation of AFFH, and our inclusionary development policy as presented here today. Like I mentioned before, we're in the middle of a housing crisis. We have unaffordable housing costs that are increasing, housing instability and displacement, particularly that has been exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic, and eviction rates that are 2.3 times higher in Black and Brown communities than in predominantly white neighborhoods here in the city of Boston. The area median income that we use right now in the city of Boston is skewed and inflated, if, you know, to, for lack of a better word. It includes 114 surrounding towns and cities, not just the city of Boston, a lot of which are much, much wealthier. And so we are using a 70% to 100% AMI to talk about affordability here in the city when the AMI for the people in the city of Boston is actually around 0% to 60%. We have a significant need for family-sized housing. 63% of new development was either a one-bedroom or a studio, even though we have a growing need for families here in the city of Boston. So this growing shortage of affordable housing is really threatening to exclude or otherwise severely harm low and moderate-income residents in the city. It negatively impacts all of our residents because it's frustrating our efforts to really maintain and increase the diversity of our populace throughout the city and also in neighborhoods who are facing displacement, and we're really struggling to maintain our status as a world-class welcoming city and affirmatively further fair housing, all of which is going to be necessary for public health, safety, and the general welfare of the city. If I can quote Councilor Bach, the inclusionary development policy is one of the tools that we have in our toolbox, and this hearing will ultimately begin the process of ensuring that our housing policy is aiding us, not preventing us from keeping our people housed. This hearing order is, like most things that will be coming out of our office, really a continuation of a long legacy of decades' work, of housing justice work from community organizations in the city and people right here on the City Council, namely, Councilor Edwards and Councilor Bach. And so I'm also really excited to maintain and continue the work of the Housing Committee as they transition into, well, Councilor Edwards transitions into her role as Senator, and I'm sure that she'll bring this work to the Senate. But to that end, I want to also thank the Coalition for a truly affordable Boston, who have been partners to our office in filing for this hearing order, and I'm excited for the conversation. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Councilora. The Chair recognizes Councilor Ujien. Councilor Ujien, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you to Councilora for filing this. Happy to be a co-sponsor. Our, you know, too often, our inclusionary development policy, there are some, like, who are able to benefit, but overall, there, it's people who sneak through, like Councilor Lara. There are so many other families that are in need and people who are needing, of a need of some form of affordable housing and don't get it. Too often, our IDP inclusionary development policy is functioning as an intentional displacement policy, right? The IDPs mean something else, and we have a lot of work to do to ensure that it is a policy that is really about including our families and our residents in the city of Boston into these new developments that we see going up. I know a lot of us, a few weeks ago, got an email from a resident, a 30, I think, early 30, Black woman, it broke my heart, because she was born and raised here in this city, and she's trying to do everything right to get out, to get somewhere to live, and she thinks that she has to leave the city of Boston because she just misses the income requirements for an IDP unit. And those are the people that we need to make sure that we're protecting. She's here, she's a social worker, trying to do right by our kids, and can't afford to live in this city. So we have a lot of work to do to make sure that we're not just becoming a city of have and have-nots. You know, page two of this hearing order talks about how we have to do an analysis of IDP to include, that includes potentially lowering profit levels and taking a look at what that looks like. Yesterday, I was sitting down with a developer, and I was saying, we need to go down, we need to look at the numbers to see what are the numbers. The 13% policy that we have right now is a displacement policy. 13% is not enough. And so, but oftentimes, you'll have developers say that we can't build if it's 20%. We can't build if it's 25%. So I think it is on our job, it is our job to look at those numbers and really take a look at what it means when they say they can't build. Is it because that would eat into their profit, or is it because the numbers actually don't work? So I'm excited for, to delve into that more deeply. Also, just want to talk about something that was mentioned earlier when we were talking about picketing, is that our role, and I didn't get to say this, our role is not just to say what's legal and what's legal within the four corners of a piece of paper. Our role is more than that, because a lot of things are legal and unjust. And so it is legal to profit millions and millions of dollars off of our property, but I think our role is often to ask what is just. And so I'm excited to have this, to continue, continue this conversation on housing. As an attorney who represents a family that's facing eviction and foreclosure, as our eviction moratorium is about to end, we're about to see more displacement in our city. More of our families are going to be suffering. So we have to do everything we can, every tool in that toolkit, to make sure we are doing everything to protect our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ujien. The Chair recognizes Councilor Bach. Councilor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you to Councilor Lara and Louis Jean for allowing me to join. And, and I really want to give thanks to my colleague, Councilor Edwards, as well, because the reality is, I think, we're at an exciting crossroads in terms of how to make our IDP policy better serve the residents of Boston, and in significant part, that's because of her leadership in getting a home rule petition passed through the State House last year, happened in the wee hours of January 6, I think, 3? And it means that we're actually going to be able to codify the IDP policy, not just as a mayoral executive order, but actually as something that's in our zoning and kind of has that, that formality that linkage has long had since the 80s. And I think that's really going to strengthen the policy, and it's going to help us move towards a number of the things that the Coalition for truly affordable Boston and other advocates have pushed for, namely, you know, how do we lower the threshold, because we all know that because of 10 units, we get a heck of a lot of nine-unit proposals? How do we deepen affordability, as was mentioned before? You know, have a range of affordabilities, get ourselves down more towards that Boston median income, and how do we have a higher unit count? And I think, like, the challenges, obviously, are that each of those things is costly. Like, you know, we don't always focus on the fact that if, like, we have a 30% AMI unit, the, the way that all pencils out, one of those could cost sort of what two of the 70% ones do in terms of, like, the profit number. So I think what, what our advocates have really challenged all of us to do is push towards the limits, like Councilor Louis Jean said, and really, really think about how are we utilizing all of the, like, available, the profit that's in these deals that make them appealing and make them appealing even when there's mitigation pieces, you know, how do we really push more of that towards the people in our city who need it most? And I will just say that I, I'm previously on the record on this, but I want to take the opportunity to say, I feel especially strongly that in places where the city is creating significant public value by upzoning an area, particularly something that we do through planned development areas, I mean, if somebody's got a piece of land that currently says they can build six stories on it, and the city says now you can build 12 stories, it's like we've created another piece of land that you can build six stories on out of the sky. And I just think that as we think about adjusting the policy, we really need to look at places where we're creating major public value and saying, we need more of this for the public good, and the public good looks like housing our, our lower-income citizens. So I'm really looking forward to digging into the weeds in this. I want to thank the mayor's team and the mayor for the major steps that she announced back in December on this front, and, and I know that, you know, part of what the Coalition and the administration is weighing right now is, what do we do in the interim and what can we codify in zoning as, as Councilor Edwards helps make possible for us? So I'm really looking forward to that conversation, and I'm thrilled that we've got so many housing advocates on the council. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Bach. The Chair recognizes Councilor Baker. Councilor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't necessarily disagree with, with this as, as it stands, but I do think that we have to be careful. The more layers of government, the more costs coming from government on the development community, I think we're going to see the development community start to trickle away from Boston. That being said, we still haven't spent anything on building any units at all. We've spent, I think, I think it was $38 million going in, was it $38 million going into support of homeless services? One number I got for the Roundhouse was over $5 million we're, we're spending on giving people rooms and, and the people that are performing, that are coming to our neighborhoods, our communities and wreaking havoc in them, and we're giving them, we're giving them housing. We're not helping that family that, that can maybe come up with 1500 or 1600. We're not giving them 500 or 1,000 bucks to be able to get that unit for 2,500. Opera money, where is it all going? Still haven't built a, a single unit with opera money. We should be looking at direct designation for the developers, because they know how to spend their money efficiently, and we, we ought to allow them, set them up, set them up with ways to put their money into actual developments. We're going to build 100 units here from this project, that project, that project. We're not having any of those discussions. It's all layers of bureaucracy, layers of, of rules, and more and more money every time we turn around. So, but do sign my name onto this, because I need to be part of this conversation, because I'm probably the only one that thinks like this. But thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the hearing order.
Thank you, Council Baker. The Chair recognizes Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really want to thank the lead sponsors. I think this discussion is past due. In Alston-Brighton, we've seen, we've been working really hard to try and move the needle on this issue, and, you know, we've, we've seen over the past 10 years, thousands, 10, 10,000, I don't know what the number is, but it's thousands of new units of housing built in Alston-Brighton. And frankly, you know, the IDP units, the 13% that the developers said they couldn't possibly do anymore, they were 70% of the area median income. So, and they were studios and one-bedrooms, so that meant that you can't raise a family in a studio. The studios were priced at 2,400, those were the affordable units. So most of the folks, the working people in Alston-Brighton couldn't afford the so-called income-restricted housing that was being built. So really welcome this opportunity to really see if we can get, get, change this, this pattern. Three years ago, we were routinely getting 13%. Now, we, through incredible efforts from our office and other advocates in the neighborhood, we're able to get developers to build, to get them to 17%, 20%, 28%. We have one project under development or under review right now, it's going to be 80% affordable. So we really, really are grateful to those developers who are prepared to dig in and find other mechanisms to help them build more affordable housing. But across the city, we have so much more to do. I heard this morning on the news that Boston is going to knock San Francisco off the pole position for the most lab space. We have 60 million, 30 million square feet of lab space in the city right now, and there's another 60 million in the pipeline or on, on the horizon. Do we really want to be San Francisco? We have to ensure that there's a balance between, we have limited amount of land, we have to ensure that there's some sort of a balance between lab development and residential development. One thing in our neighborhood, we're asking the lab developers is, you want to build a lab, you have to build some housing. Because at the same time as we're talking about that, we have, we're building, right now, we have 6,000 parking spaces being built to support lab development in our neighborhood. That means that where those, those people, that's the assumption that those workers cannot live in our city. So we have to change that equation, not only from the livability and the sustainability of, but also from a climate perspective. So I really welcome this. This is a, a very complex intersectionality of all these different factors, but this is a well-passed-due initiative, and I really look forward to being part of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you to the sponsors for bringing this. In 2013, in the height of the, the mayoral race, had someone say to me that in the next 10 years, the city was going to look very different, because I was talking about the importance of building Black and Brown leadership and, and more folks being able to stay here. And I was really caught off guard, and I didn't understand why this individual said it with so much confidence, that the city was going to look very different 10 years from now. And now I know why, because the tools that we have in our toolbox have not been set up for us to stay in the city of Boston. And I think that now, 10 years later, the hypothesis is quite clear, that we need to do more as it relates to being more aggressive around dealing this, with this conversation around displacement. And to who said that, and you know who you are, this is an opportunity for us to own it and do something different. So I'm here for all the conversation, and thank my colleagues for bringing it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mejia. The Chair recognizes Councilor Lara. Councilor Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. One, I want to share my agreement with Councilor Baker on one point, and it's that we need to use all of our resources to meet the housing crisis, right? Federal, state money that's coming to us, and that we need to do a better job at that. I want to clarify for the record, because there was a mention of the resources that we were investing in the temporary housing plan, particularly for people who live on mass and CAS. The numbers that we have in the city data show that 80% of the people who we are housing in the low-threshold housing actually show a previous permanent address of being in the city of Boston. It's really important for me to clarify that, because that is a really incredibly dangerous narrative that positions people from our city who are struggling against other people in our city who are struggling, while developers come into our city and make off with hundreds of millions of dollars of profit on the backs of the residents of the city of Boston. So I wanted to make sure that I shared that information. I don't think that's information that's been shared on the council floor publicly, but I think that it's a persistent narrative, that we are somehow investing money into people who are not from our city, and the numbers and the data that we have for the people that we're housing in low-threshold housing show the opposite. I am not a believer in the narrative that even if these people were not from here, that we shouldn't support them, but the numbers that we have go against that narrative, and I wanted to make sure that it was shared on the floor and that we're careful. I wanted to make sure that it was shared on the floor, and that we're careful about not positioning our constituents against other members of our constituency while people are coming to our city and reaping the benefits of our policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Laura. The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez-Anderson. Council Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my, to the co-sponsors or the sponsors on this. I felt like I needed to say something, because I, as a District Seven City Councilor, so much development is going or is being proposed, or RFPs are out from the city, from BPDA, proposing to the community to see what they want to take place in District Seven. Mostly Roxbury is impacted by this, and when we get into the meetings, I agree, I wholeheartedly support this and hopefully look forward to the conversations. And I think that it's a perfect time to say that a lot of these developments, a lot of these community processes or developers are going to come to you, my colleagues, to ask you for your support. I am, I want to go on record that I will wholeheartedly object or not support any further development, especially in Roxbury, encroaching, gentrifying, moving people out in Roxbury, that is a detriment to our community. And I think that what they do is they go to different, they go to my colleagues to try to seek support behind my back or in front of me, doesn't matter. And I'm saying to you, in the spirit of this conversation here, we're not, we're not having it. And Roxbury is Gavinizing, D seven, Roxbury, Fenway, I have every single leader on one team, and we're all saying the same thing. It's not going to happen. So while we're doing this, because this is going to take time, everything else is moving at light speed. The RFPs are going out like this, left to right. These meetings are happening left to right. People are not being heard. Like my Councilor Lou Jean was saying, I have elderly people crying and calling me and telling me about how they're going to be homeless. I have an elderly sister on Blue Hill Avenue whose SSI is like twelve hundred, her rent is eleven fifty. How is she eating? And then can't qualify for food stamps because technically she has income. It's so bad in Roxbury, and Roxbury has the brunt of it. And I can, I know that my colleague, Worrell, can speak to this, because his district is the poorest. We have people that are dying and suffering and calling our offices and all on this housing thing, and telling developers, and telling BPDA, and telling ZBA, this AMI is too high, the calculation is ridiculous, IDP, this doesn't, this doesn't pertain to us. We don't qualify. We can't get in the house. It is not Roxbury's responsibility to house everybody that's homeless. We want to help, but you can't play on our feelings, you can't pull on our heartstrings to try to tell us how, what, you don't care about housing? So this is how they come at us? You care about housing, right? So what do you want to see in this land? No, we're not doing it. And I'm telling you, I don't, I came here, and my colleagues here, no. I ran for office with my heart. Thirty-two BJ is why I'm here. This is how I got here. And then I got everybody else to support after I ran, won the primaries. So I owe nothing but God, my people, and I'm here to represent. And this really hits home, because my rent is three thousand dollars. As a counselor, I can't afford to be here. So it's very personal, and we're going to start getting real crazy. We're going to start pushing back and fighting. It's time, y'all. Do not, please, I'm asking you as a favor, do not support these developments in B seven. We're going to push really hard until we make sure that it's truly, you know, that it actually helps, that it doesn't hinder us. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez-Anderson. Would anyone like to add their name onto this? Please raise your hand. Please add Council Royal.
I'm already, sorry, I don't hear you.
Yep, that's right. Council Baker, Council Braden, Council Flaherty, Council Fernandez-Anderson, Council Mihia, Council Murphy, Council Worrell, please add the Chair. The third late file matter will be assigned to the Committee on Housing, Community Development. We're on to the green sheets. Anyone wishing to remove the matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Council Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the, in the spirit of Women's History Month, and also with respect to today's resolution, I'd like to pull Doc at zero-three-five-two. That's page eight out of nine in the Green Sheets Committee on Public Safety, and it is a, it's a federal grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, which I know the clerk will read, Violence Against Women Act, the STOP Grant.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Doc at zero-three-five-two into the record?
Document number zero-three-five-two from the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars and thirteen cents in the form of a grant for fiscal year twenty-one Violence Against Women Act STOP Grant awarded by the United States Department of Justice, passed through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the civilian domestic violence advocate who provides services for victims in Jamaica Plain, East Boston, and Charlestown.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And this, Mr. President, may I just add that this grant, it's allocated from the federal funds that were not spent from the previous year.
If you can give us, give me one minute. Mr. Clerk, can you please pull the committee members to see if they would allow the document to come before our body?
Members of the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Laura.
Yes.
Council Baker.
Yes.
Council Royal.
Yes.
And Council Braden.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Zero-three-five-two is now properly before the body. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Yes, just to, thank you, Mr. President. Just a footnote, the twenty-eight thousand dollar grant was not spent from the previous year, so those funds will be added to the current year, and this body has already passed a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand to go to this very same program. So a great and worthy program, they're doing great work over the Family Justice Center, and would like to get these resources over to them again in the spirit of Women's History Month. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty moves for passage of Doc at zero-three-five-two. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Doc at zero-three-five-two is passed. We're moving on to the consent agenda. I have been informed by the clerk that there is one addition to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, the consent agenda has been adopted. Now we're on to announcements. Does any of my colleagues have any announcements at this time? The Chair recognizes Council Mihia. Council Mihia, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We've had lots of late files, but we were here for all of it, so I really do appreciate you all hanging in there. I just wanted to take a quick moment to acknowledge some special guests that we have here with us this afternoon. We're joined by Linda Spears, who's the Commissioner of the Massachusetts Department of Children and Families, and Lynn Hogan, who's Deputy Commissioner for the Massachusetts Department of Children and Families. We recognize their amazing work through a couple of official resolutions that we passed a few weeks ago, but I wanted to take this time during our announcement portion today to talk about their work and the impact it has had on our community. Commissioner Spears began her career working for the Rhode Island Department of Children, Youth, and Families as a social caseworker. As someone who has worked with caseworkers for decades, I can speak personally to what it takes to wake up every day and go into that line of work. It takes integrity, grit, compassion, and empathy. After spending four years there, she came to Massachusetts to work for what was then called Department of Social Services, now DCF. She remained for nearly a decade, serving in a variety of roles, the last of which was the Director of Field Support. In 2015, she was appointed as the Commissioner of DCF by Governor Baker. Leanne Hogan was appointed as Deputy Commissioner of Field Operations in 2015, having previously served as an Associate Regional Director of Western Regional before that. Like Commissioner Spears, Leanne brings an incredible amount of passion and integrity to her work. DCF is one of the most important social services we provide as a commonwealth, and that work cannot go without the leadership of the people like Commissioner Spears and Deputy Commissioner Hogan. It can often be thankless to work under these conditions. I know that to be the case. So I want to take this opportunity to thank you both for your hard work, and to present you with these official resolutions, I'm in citations, on behalf of the Boston City Council, and we'd like to take a photo. So once my colleagues are done, the President will let us know what that's going to look like, and we have them here.
Thank you, thank you, Council Mihia. At this time, the Chair recognizes Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, on behalf of myself and Council Bock and all the members of the council, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Norman Hura. Norman, obviously, before Mike became the fourteenth City Council, Norman Hura held that title as an all-time West Ender, and I found out recently that he had passed, and I was waiting for the action we took today, which was sunsetting the urban renewals, because he was just so passionate about that issue. And he would come into this chamber every single Wednesday, never missed a council session when I served here, and he would sit literally right behind where Councilor Bock sits. And he was a student of politics, he was very knowledgeable. He used to host the West End Tree Lightings every year, did a lot of private fundraising, helping many different causes, peach of a guy. He had died sort of during COVID with very little, if any, fans for, I don't even think he really even got it mentioned, but he loved the Boston City Council, he loved the institution, he loved City Hall, city government, he was passionate about the West End, and I just thought it was fitting that we adjourn in his memory today, particularly because we are sunsetting nine urban renewal plans, which he spent a significant part of his life fighting as an all-time West Ender, and I believe, Kenzie may know this or not, but I believe he may have been one of the last remaining houses that may not have been sort of touched by urban renewal. But again, I just want to make sure that this body adjourns on behalf of the memory of Norman Hura, the fourteenth member of the Boston City Council.
Well, well said, Council Flaherty. And as Council, as Council Mihia mentioned, immediately after, after we adjourn, we will have a photo with the state leaders that are with us, a group photo, and also, we're going to have a quick lunch, but in the Curly Room as well. At this time, let me recognize Council Fernandez-Anderson.
I'm sorry, y'all, I'm in a really talkative mood today. I don't know what's going on. I just wanted to, I'm not going to mention the name for this announcement in respect to keeping it to this person's privacy. Sometimes we are reactionary, and we may seem a little anxious in interacting with each other, and sometimes you don't know what's going on with that person. And I wanted to ask you that you keep each other in prayer, that we keep each other in prayer. We don't know what's going on with each other in terms of our health, in terms of, and this person shared something today that's very emotional for me, because my sister has the exact same condition as this person and has gone through, and has also suffered strokes and is going into a situation of procedure. So I would like for you to just ask that we all keep each other in prayer in terms of our health and wellness and spirit, and be graceful to each other, to forgive one another when we're less impatient with each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez-Anderson. We're on to memorials. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. Councila Edwards, Gerardo Fabrizio. Councila Baker, John Feeney. Council Flynn, Alicia Monero. Sandra Melis. For Councilas Flynn and Flaherty, Richard Levin. Valerie Greeley. For Council Lou Jean, Ethan Michael Wall. For the entire city council, Peter Mancini. Pasquale La Faciccia. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those mentioned. We are scheduled to meet again in the Ionella Chamber on Wednesday, April sixth, at twelve noon. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. The councilor is adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and thank you to city council central staff, and if people can gather up here for our, our photo.